Six thirty-two. We will call to order the school committee meeting for November second, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chambers, did you want to follow up?
No, we'll follow our meeting together to get to order.
Great, so now that everybody's in order. The first item on our agenda is a joint meeting with our select board and our town administrator on our recommendation for a new director of Department of Public Facilities, which is a position that was recently created in collaboration between the two bodies. Is there anything else that we need to share? Do you have anything?
Um, school committee, I did put in your packet a memorandum. Mr. Sullivan is here tonight, he's sitting in the back. But John is here this evening. So Jim Petrus, Mark Bale, Dave DeRozers, and I were a search committee that interviewed three semifinalists after we reviewed paper applications. We put forth a recommendation for John as a finalist. And so Chris and I are pleased to recommend John to you as the Director of Department of Public Facilities. He is a Gramby High School graduate, well-known by Mr. Petrus, but not for being in trouble, so I understand.[83.25][83.25][laughter] To my clarify that, right out of the gate.
Thanks for doing that.[88.15][88.15][laughter]
Yeah. John has an associate's degree in biomedical technology from Springfield College. He's served in a variety of positions where he's done facilities work. And his most recent position was a facilities manager at the Westover Job Corps. And, you know, I think John has the skills, the energy, and the wherewithal to tackle the work of this position. So, I don't know if you wanna say hi to John, ask him any questions?
Hello, hello, everybody?
Hi, good to see you. And the nice thing is that the buildings did not change at all since.
No, I know my layout.
He's just learning where the boilers are now.[131.13][131.13][laughter] Didn't know as a student.
So, is there anything else from the select board to share?
We're just, we're all good? We're just happy to have worked with you and come up with a, I think this is our first shared position in town, certainly between the town and the schools, but stepping in the right direction.
Agreed, it was a good collaboration, a lot of good effort. Thank you Judy, again, Chris, you, for leading the effort, spearheading the effort. Much appreciated. So I guess, we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So you would, each body would need to vote on the recommendation to appoint John Sullivan as the Director of the Department of Public Facilities.
Okay.
Say that five times fast.
Well done. Did you, did you wanna start?
I have a motion to, a motion to approve.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve our new facilities director?
I'd be pleased to recommend John Sullivan to be our Director of Department of Public Facilities.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or nay? Okay, good. Well, congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're in like Flynn.
That was easy.[206.62][206.62][laughter]
Yes.
Before we adjourn, has there been any talk about having maybe a get-together for department heads never in the meet, Mr. Sullivan, or?
We did not have that conversation, but.
We haven't done like an official get-together. I think John's, probably his head is swimming after today. He had a prior mod of Dave DeRozers hands.[230.65][230.65][laughter] But it's, it's happened sort of informally on our side, but I don't know if you wanna do something that's more formal, we could certainly work on.
Something I wanna talk about?
Um, I think we should probably delegate it to Chris and Judy.
Okay.
Well, we have a, we have the department people meeting once a month, so that might be a, a good place to have it happen.
Is that fairly soon? It's monthly?
When is the next one, Chris?
Next, December?
Do you have a date, or not yet?
Right.
Okay.
Alright. So on the school side, it should be fairly straightforward, right?
Well, John and I haven't had much time to talk today because he's busy trying to come up to speed enough with our consultant over a five-year capital plan for facilities since due, I guess, on November twentieth, I found out last Friday.
So is today John's official first day?
Yeah, yeah. It was, so we're trying to get our feet wet, but certainly he'll be part of our senior leadership team meetings on the business side, so.
Alright. So we'll keep you busy.
Of course.
Anything else for John, for, for the select board?
Do you have any questions for us, John?
Nope, I'm.
It's too late to back out.
I will, now, right now.
Cool. Alright, well, thank you all for coming then.
Thank you.
We got a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
It was nice to see you.
Good to see you too. Have a good evening, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you, John.
For coming.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Shift down.
Yeah. Yeah, now we can.
Give you some room.
Just kinda move so people have room.
I am told that closeness is overrated, so we just.
Way overrated. What year did he graduate in?
What? Not this chummy.
Sixth grader from. I have to think of words.
I need a little space.
Yeah, it is.
Knocking somebody in the head with nails.
Be honest, it's a little.
Maybe.
So I need one of those, the British Parliament gavels, order, order thing, you know?
I think you gotta work on.
But I need a wig too, yes. Yes, I have a lot to work on, so I'm gonna put that on the list.
That's what we were wondering, 'cause he looks familiar.
So we're still, we're still in session? Next up is the approval of our minutes from October nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. Did everyone get a chance to look at them, and if so, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from October nineteenth?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteenth.
Thank you, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussions, corrections, any edits?
Um, not that I saw.
Alright, great, then. All in favor to approve the minutes from October nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have awards and presentations.
We don't have anything tonight, 'cause we knew we had a pretty full agenda, so.
Okay.
Come to your next one.
Cool, cool. So, next is the exciting part of our agenda, our visitors' comments, and we have visitors today. So just to remind everyone, any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior, or the log is on the desk. The visitor will be, will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. But we are very happy to have you guys here, and who would like to start?
I'm first up, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'm just gonna sit, this is comfortable. I'm Andrea Kennedy, I live at one-twelve Cold Hill in Gramby. I'm not here as PTO president, I'm simply Andrea Kennedy, concerned parent and member of our small community. I'm here to ask for a reversal on the new policy regarding the distribution of flyers. Dr. Hul is a forward-thinking person and sees the value in a digital backpack, as do I. This is our future, electronic communication will eventually be the only way we all communicate with each other, but that day is not here yet. Yes, we should add digital backpack to our present modes of communication. Distribution of flyers is a tried and true form of communication between teachers, schools, communities, and families. Parents want flyers to come home, to remind them what's going on, and to hang the important ones on their refrigerator or their office wall. Let's think about how other communities practice this policy of advertising. Why should Gramby be the only district that does not allow flyers? Dr. Hul's intention, I believe, is to save time, money, and resources, also to streamline and organize a system that's full of requests. Well, money is not a problem with the nonprofit child center organizations, for they pay for their own flyers. Distribution is not a problem in the elementary and middle school, because there are volunteers, secretaries, teachers, and even students that help to distribute willingly and happily. I'm concerned about the elimination of the GAA, the Gramby Athletic Association, the Boy Scouts, and the Girl Scouts. Why? If a disclaimer is added to the flyer, a disclaimer that we talked about that's in the policy, and "please recycle" is added to the flyer, then state requirements are fulfilled. And I do wanna point out on this piece of paper that Dr. Hul gave us to, about the distribution of Boy Scouts literature in public schools, it says on there, "Alternatively, a school committee may decide to permit outside groups to post notices or distribute flyers at school as part of the limited public forum that the school committee wishes to provide." So it is up to you to make that decision, and you have the right to do so. Young families are overwhelmed with caring for their children, getting to work and staying on top of things, and flyers help the parents decide what's important and what's not. Emails and checking websites are definitely our future, but they are not meant to replace this important style of communication that we've used for decades, generations. I do think it's a great idea to save the district money by uploading lunch menus, downloading student handbooks that are costly to print, and using signup genius for the teacher-parent conferences was great. These are all great advances to save the district time and money, but refusing the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the GAA and the DARE program that the Gramby Police Department provides from advertising via flyers in our school is just downright antisocial, it's negatively affecting our activities, and it is reducing our participation. So deleting this particular standard of mode of communication perpetuates isolation and confusion in our busy lives. So please consider changing the policy to reflect the inclusion of these nonprofit, child-centered, worthy organizations that need our children's participation to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, so, let's do it this way, let's just hear all of you, I think we have, are you here for the same, all, same thing?
No, I just wrote my name down in case I wanted to.
In case you wanted to, okay, well, you know, hopefully you do.
I'm covered.
So, did you have anything to state as well, differently?
Well, I, my name is Chris Weatherby, I live at one-twenty-two Taylor Street, and I'm on board with Andrea, we met with Dr. Hul, there were several of us in the group, the Gramby Music Department, the Girl Scouts, representatives from the Boy Scouts, Gramby Athletic, and we're all concerned about this flyer issue. It appears, at least to me, that this creates a silo. You have very little communication with the school unless you go out onto the digital backpack. Is it helpful? Absolutely, but it's not the only way of communication for us all. I, I used to take the flyers, I'd say, oh, this is what I'm interested, put in on my refrigerator as a reminder. I work on the computer all day long, when I come home, I'm like, a digital backpack, okay. Do I go through my kids' folders to see what they're doing in school, or do I go onto the digital backpack to look for flyers? I'm not gonna get home till nine-thirty tonight, I've been up since three in the morning. I, I would pick my son's folder to see how he's doing in school, did he do his homework, is it even close to being right? You know, and for me, and I know for a lot of the parents, we rely on those, so I talked to some people at work. I talked to people from Chicopee, from South Hadley, Agwam, and they're all using flyers. And I asked them, well, is there any limitations to these flyers? And they basically have seen no limitations as to what's coming home to them. And here we are, I feel like we've been cut off at the knees, instead of phasing it out, limiting it, I just find that it has not been helpful. Even with our fundraisers, it's been hitting the fundraisers, and those are for the kids.
Thank you. Did you, do you wanna?
Yeah, and also, there's something later I'd like to address. I work in the school, been working in the school forever, twenty-eight years, this is twenty-nine, I've seen both sides of this. The beginning of the school, parents are overloaded with stacks of paperwork that they need to fill out, that come home, also flyers for this, that, and the other thing. Limiting the flyers, I feel, is a good thing. You're gonna have to be pretty selective and set some guidelines, you can't just say, okay, you know, PTO, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, police, they can send stuff, but so-and-so can't. I mean, it's a catch-twenty-two situation, because there have been times when there are more papers going home about things going on and you're invited to, than the work that the kids have accomplished in school. Because I've been one of the ones stuffing folders. Do the parents look? Then you have some children whose parents do not look, okay? You have a kid who, at the end of the week, you're saying to him, on Monday, you know, your parents really need to empty your folder. Well, are they keeping it there for safekeeping, so they know what's going on, or did they even look at it? So there are two sides, and I totally understand both sides.
Thank you all very much for coming. Typically, we actually, we start on our agenda, so we're not gonna be discussing this at this meeting, we take under advisement, and then we talk about the concerns that you voiced. But just so, to make sure that there is no misunderstanding around the policy, because we just had this conversation around our policy. Instead of responding to what concerns you raised directly and turned into a full-blown conversation, I would encourage everyone to look at the policy that we have in place. We actually did not eliminate all flyers. They, especially, since you mentioned fundraisers, at the urging of our superintendent, before there was any concern raised to us, we updated the policy, the digital backpack policy, or this is actually the advertising policy that includes the digital backpack, to include something that says, if it's fundraising-related, at the discretion of the superintendent, the flyers will be sent home. Also, in terms of the, being selective, we have to be selective, because we can't really send every flyer home, that's, that's something that we dictate many times, it's something that we have to abide by. So the digital backpack allows us, as you can see in our policy, to be able to, responsive to the entire community, and we can put some of those things that we cannot send home otherwise through school in the digital backpack and share it with the, with the community. And I think the other thing that you mentioned is that some of the activities are not necessarily getting the visibility that, visibility that they were getting before. Let's have the conversation around those. I mean, fundraising, I think we're gonna be fine, because anything fundraiser-related, we're gonna be allowing flyers for those anyway, or the school system will be allowing flyers for those. For any other activity, I think we have an opportunity to measure. Each one of you articulated very clearly and very nicely that our effort is not to hurt anyone, any particular group. To the contrary, we appreciate everything that you are doing for the, for the schools, for our schools, for our students, but what we're trying to do is find different ways of doing these things. There are some organizations, like GMPA, that is actually communicating, as far as I know, exclusively via email, because I'm a member, and I receive everything from them via email, they do, there are sign-ups by email and all that, seems like it is working for the most part for some organizations. But if it is not, I don't think we're gonna be close to these conversations, and we're gonna, at one point, we're gonna, it may be as soon as our next meeting, depending on our agenda, to have some conversation around this. So, I guess, I will leave you with this, please don't take anything that we do and any policies that we pass as a reaction to any group, any entity in our town, especially this one, where we really would like the communication lines to be open, it's one of our goals as a school district and as school committee, so we don't really want to curtail anything related to communication. So, don't take this as us responding to you to stop the conversation, let's take this as the start of some conversation, let's see if there's any evidence that indeed some things are being hampered because of our policy, we'll be happy to look at our policies, and which policy, in fact, right before this meeting, we had our policy subcommittee meeting, which tries to look at the entire policy set, to see whether or not there's a way to improve, there's always some room to improve all those. So, again, thank you all very much for coming, thank you for voicing your thoughts, your ideas and opinions. We'll be in touch soon, if you have any questions in the meanwhile, just let us know, and we'll continue this conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Do you stay in?
Okay, thank you.
Nice question, this is a follow-up.
Sure.
You know how we made that change? When we added the fundraising, was that communicated to each level?
Yes, when, yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it all flows through my office first, anyway, so principals are aware of the change to the policy, so they do know that.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, and just, just as kind of a follow-up, we're not refusing, your policy does not refuse anybody from advertising unless, you know, were defamatory or violated some law of statute. What your policy follows is that advisory from the former Commissioner of Education about whether or not you can compel children to take them flyers, if you remember that, that memo from Dave Driscoll, you know, so that if it's an organization like the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts are outside of, not affiliated with the school, you cannot force it to go into every backpack, even if it's in paper. And that's pretty much the law of the land, because there were parents who were upset with getting things from organizations that they did not wish to align with. So that's when that ruling came out, and that's pretty much the rule of thumb, 'cause I've had it come at me from the other angle, when people got things that they did not want to get. So that's how I actually came upon that memo in the first place, was that we can't compel those kinds of things. The GAA has never approached me with trying to get any flyers, paper or otherwise, put forward, and they did put out a sign for basketball sign-ups, and I did say to Ms. Weatherby that, you know, we certainly would have been happy to put a flyer up in the digital backpack had we known, but I didn't. So, just wanna be, so that you're clear, your policy does not refuse any organization
So, can we have a discussion, or are we not supposed to have a discuss? How does this work now? Are we supposed to put it on an agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, ideally, we could.
Technically, if you're gonna deliberate in any length of time, we could put it on the next agenda and have some discussion around it.
I guess my only comment is, something isn't getting communicated about whatever our policy is, and the way it's getting communicated and conveyed is confusing, misleading, and I'm not sure where the breakdown is. So we, we, you know, we have to.
That is, I mean, that's, that's a very good point, let's just make sure that everybody understands it. I also sense that there was some misunderstanding as well, because there's also allowance for parents, if they do not have access to the internet, to come and tell us that they need to receive the flyers, and we said, sure, we'll just, you know, we'll continue to produce the flyers for those families that do not have access to the electronic media.
It sounds like there's some confusion.
Yeah, there is some confusion.
Yeah, so, the break, I mean, obviously, we have to clear that up.
Yeah.
We, as the school committee and the, you know, I don't know how we do, I don't know if it's just a matter of.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've heard a whole lot of different ways, but certainly, that doesn't preclude me from continuing to do that, so that the correct message gets out. Also, you had asked at the last meeting about doing something on GCAM, so I've been having some back and forth with Tricia Woods about using a screencast, because for her to take a screenshot of either a computer screen or an image from a digital projector does not translate well necessarily on camera, so she's looking at some digital, at some screencasting software that we could use, for me to do the demo and do a screencast of the, of the demo with screenshots, in a way that would make some sense, along with possibly a little comedy skit to catch people's attention, so.
And it might also, that part of it, might be good to show people how quickly it can be accessed.
Yes.
I mean, I understand that people work and are tired, but it doesn't take a long time, so, I mean, if people saw that, maybe they would be less afraid of it.
Right, and, and knowing that this wasn't an issue when the Girl Scouts sent that letter to the last meeting, you know, I even started to, on the connected all email, attaching flyers, putting flyers in as attachments, so people don't even have to go looking for them, hi, it's attached to this email.
And you can print it out, right?
Yeah.
Maybe you have access to print it out.
Sure, yeah, 'cause they're all PDFs, everything I send out, I send out in PDF form, 'cause usually, everybody on the planet can read those in some way, shape, or form, so.
But just to be sure, we're not, we're not printing flyers for outside entities or anything like that, or non, if they're not nonprofit related to school.
No, 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 I'm saying of parents.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to explain as well, but our digital backpack almost allowed us to have that community connection for some of those entities for which we cannot print, we can still put their announcements in our digital backpack, we thought that was an improvement to what the policy was before. But if there is anything to discuss, especially on the communication side, if there is anything we can do, that would be.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So maybe what we need to do is add this to the agenda for next month, regardless, so that we can revisit this, because folks did take the time out and write, you know, so we need to make sure that this is corrected.
So the sixteenth is our next meeting?
Yes.
Cool, thank you all.
Yeah, I'm telling you, if I get sick, I'm sorry. I'm in trouble.
You are in trouble.
Well, if all is well, next up is our student rep.
I have a few things to report. On October twelfth, Hope participated in the Veterans 5K Walk slash Run, and there was, there was a good turnout of people there from home. Also, the Special Olympics, which Hope helped to put on here, it went well, too. On Friday, there was the Halloween trick-or-treating event here, and, well, that went well, too. And also, the cotillion tickets are gonna be forty dollars, and Student Council is working towards helping more with the community.
Can you remind us where the cotillion's gonna be?
It is the Knights of Columbus, not the castle, the one on Gramby Road, I think it is.
Okay.
I'm not really sure where that is.
Is that, okay, good.
Gramby Road going toward the center, we actually had it there two years ago, and it's a nice venue.
I'm not going to review it there.
That's good.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And the date was, Annabelle?
Um, December fifth.
December fifth, okay, cool. That's all, is there anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And feel free to stay as long as you want, I know it's a, it's a off day tomorrow, so if you wanna stay, stay, if you have to go, you can leave as well. Okay, next we have our reports and recommendations from our superintendent.
Yes, as I had told you at the last meeting, I had had some concerns about substitute pay, and so I did do some surveying, and Emery Sapowski, who is our substitute coordinator, had also done some as well, without my even asking her, which was great to do. So when I, I looked at the data around substitute pay for teachers, we are near the bottom of neighboring districts, it's a flat sixty-five dollars per day. I also understand that there is a requirement that I'm not, I have not yet found in writing, but some way, that there is a requirement that they must have a four-year degree.
Oh. Is that aside from the licensed/unlicensed differentiation that we see here, or?
And in Ludlow's case, it's actually, it's seventy dollars a day without a four-year degree, and seventy-five with a four-year degree, and that's not even talking about licensure.
Okay.
So, again, I don't know if you want to think about for teachers. So again, I don't know if you want to think about for teachers some sort of two-tiered system. I think they do need beyond a high school diploma. I would be honest, I would say that an associate or an equivalent would probably be the minimum benchmark I would, I would recommend setting to you in terms of whatever. Our teachers are good about leaving really well-thought-out lesson plans, so it's not like people are sitting around twiddling their thumbs.
Are other districts having problems getting, because I know that I'm seeing these emails, you know, almost on a daily basis.
Yeah, I think we have more problems than others, but I do think there are some difficulties. I think it would behoove us to, between now and the semester break, to get the word out on college campuses that we're interested in subs because oftentimes there are students who are pretty much done by the end of the first semester, may not be actually graduating because they get a few whatevers, but they have a lesser class load, maybe looking to get a teaching job, would like to be able to sort of, you know, audition in a district and see if that leads to something more permanent. So I think it would behoove us to put out some feelers within the five college system in particular, but, you know, Springfield College as well, AIC, some of the area colleges to be able to-
So, let me ask you this. Let's say we have a student like that. I'm assuming before they graduate, they're not gonna have the license and therefore it's gonna go under the unlicensed category. But if we look at the individual who might have a four-year degree, how, how often do we see someone who has a four-year degree with the intention of doing teaching, yet not licensed? Is that, is that pretty common?
I mean, we've seen that before.
But how often do we see it?
It's lesser common than it used to be because it used to be you finished your entire coursework and then you sat for the MTEL. And depending on how you did on the MTELs would depend on when you got licensed. Now, most programs are forcing students to take parts of the MTEL through the process of the program so that they've got those MTEL tests under their belts at the same time they graduate so that they're not winding up in this particular place. So that seems to have been, for most of the programs that I know, seems to be proactive stuff that they have taken to get teachers to take or teacher candidates to take those sections of the MTEL so that licensure is pretty quick once they have a degree in hand.
And the main reason why I'm asking is this. All these policies are, they're the rule. There are exceptions and then we accommodate exceptions if there's a need for it. At least in the examples that you provided to us, looks like the licensed/unlicensed differentiation seems to be doing okay for Belcher Town and Hadley, which are comparable school districts to ours. At least in my mind, I was thinking that instead of going and branching out to other differentiators, if this is okay from your perspectives, we would, I would prefer to stay with one definition and just go with that.
I'm still a little confused as to why Granby's having such a hard time because Belcher Town and South Hadley are comparable. I mean-
And East Hampton also pays sixty-five dollars a day for unlicensed.
And if you're licensed, it's five dollars more a day. I mean, we're talking a day. I mean, I, there has to be other factors going on other than dollars and cents.
We are not alone in a shortage of subs, but I think it does matter that we at least don't have a two-tiered system. So, for example, I finish in December, I'm good to go, my license is good to go, but there are no full-time jobs unless somebody has chosen to resign in the middle of the year. So I'm gonna earn a living probably by waiting tables and stuff until I can get a teaching job. You know, might incentivize somebody to come who holds a license but does not yet have a full-time position.
I guess I'm just skeptical that if we make this small change going to this tier, that it's, it's gonna solve our problem.
I don't think it's gonna solve the full problem, but I think it's going to help because that's the feedback that Anne-Marie is getting from subs is that oftentimes she will call them and they will say, "I'm not gonna make a commitment right now because somebody who pays more may call me."
For like, you're saying for the licensed subs?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only difference.
Because the other schools do have tiered systems. I mean, I was asking around and East Hampton has the tiered system and plus they're getting a raise next year. So, I think, I think that having a tiered system is more important for the reasons you said.
Well, and South Hadley though, is they're sixty dollars for unlicensed. We're higher for, for unlicensed. Their sixty-five is, they're totally comparable, so I'd be very curious to know if their shortage is as bad as ours.
Yeah, I, that I, I don't know.
I, I don't know, I'm just wondering if it's something in the internal, in the culture and, you know, is there some other factors going on?
Kristin, you had something to say?
The other thing that's changed this year is now they need to do three letters of recommendation, which hasn't been something that's been necessarily done in the past. Because, for example, we have some wonderful parents that are home during the day. Their children go off to school and they're available to sub. So now, the issue I've been hearing is, you know, I've been a stay-at-home mom for the last ten years.
Where do I get a letter?
Where am I gonna get a letter of recommendation? My husband, my mother, my uncle, like who? I've been out of the workforce forever, but yet the person does have a degree and stuff like that. So, those are just like some things, which aren't necessarily bad things, but it can sometimes stop people from even attempting because they don't have that resource behind them.
Do other towns have that requirement of letters of reference?
I know Belcher Town does. They do ask for letters of reference.
So, when did we institute the letters of reference policy?
This year.
This year?
Yeah.
And, well, I know that we were also having some problems last year, if I recall.
Yeah, I don't think that this is the sole issue. I think that the candidate pool, and I would say that if somebody had references from friends that just speak to the character, we are talking also about people who work with children. So, there needs to be some standards to who you hire. The other thing too is that-
Three does seem like a lot. I, I'm not an educator, so.
Yeah, I'm not either. But I actually, I'm volunteering for an exchange program that has minors and all that. I know that requiring references is pretty common practice because of the interaction with children and I, I'm actually, I'm okay with that. But I don't know whether or not that there's an added level of difficulty in our district. I have no, no visibility into that.
Yeah, and from what I hear from Anne-Marie, it's mostly a money thing and I think it's because if I have a license, I can go to Belcher Town and make seventy bucks a day or I can go to Hadley and make seventy-five bucks a day and, or I can go to Hadley at seventy bucks a day for being unlicensed. We're, and, you know, five dollars a day times five days a week is twenty-five more dollars in my pocket, you know.
Of course, you know, that, that's absolutely what I see based on this, but I did not know about South Hadley being lower.
Yeah, and those were numbers that Anne-Marie got because I did reach out to them. I did not hear back from them, so I was glad that she was able to get those because I didn't get some of the other numbers that I was looking at as well. Because I think we also have that difficulty with parents. Secretaries, not so much, but it's still sometimes is a scramble. Custodians, we have no custodial subs and it's, we've been told they won't come work for ten bucks a day.
So the other question that I have, Dr. Hall, is this. Last year, I think, in our budget, the substitute teachers line was unexpectedly different than what we had budgeted. How many hours are we talking about in the last so many years? Do we have any idea how many hours of substitute pay we're looking at?
I would have to do an analysis over, over time. I will tell you that on days when we don't have subs, there is language in the contract for people to be able to cover by period. By the time you pay that, you've paid way more than you've paid a single sub for the day. So, any extra people that we can get in here to be a single sub for the day will cost you less than it costs, you know, Mr. Gavalo's usually the one that's, you know, or Allison's running around trying to grab people to cover a class here or there.
Yeah, this morning was especially, I mean, every day, it's frustrating to be honest. When you think at seven o'clock in the morning, we're scrambling, asking teachers to cover classes. And to be quite honest with you, teachers do not enjoy that phone call when they're being asked to cover a class because it's prep time that they use to plan for lessons, to get caught up on, you know, grading, whatever it might be. And to ask them, you know, just for, you know, to cover a class is just, and they do it, but they do it reluctantly because it's more so their boss asking them to do something. And they do it, but you can tell it's something that they don't enjoy.
It seems really disruptive.
And it is supposed to be on a voluntary basis too, you know? So, I mean, the teacher does have the right to say no.
But I'm sure they feel bad because-
Well, I think they feel obligated.
Right, but you know, I mean, because they know that somebody has to be there, so.
We don't wanna educate our kids that way.
No, 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 no.
It's not that, but you know.
We gotta fix this.
Exactly.
But I, I will tell you that, you know, for example, it's nice having a science teacher cover a science class, someone who's taught the class. Like today, a biology teacher covered for another biology teacher, taught the lesson and, you know, and did the job much better as you might think than a substitute teacher can do. But at the same time, it's not the way to, you know, proceed with things.
Well, I'm wondering if you're, you know, I'm just thinking out loud, if you're more in line financially, you can be a little choosier with your subs. You know, you have a bigger pool to choose from, you know, and if you have, you need a substitute science teacher and, you know, you can start to be a little choosier.
And our principals have started, they weren't in the past doing the interviews, but when substitute applications come in, whoever the appropriate principal is gets that person so they're actually doing the interviews. So they know whether it's somebody we should have in front of children or not.
And it's posted on the website. You know, I was there Friday on the talent ed and we had a couple of applications that came in.
I haven't been today, so I'll look, yeah.
So, printing them out and bringing them in, but fortunately, it's kind of a supply and demand type thing there. We are limited with, you know, who we have.
Right. But I do know that other districts are, are having these same kinds of issues, so it is not just us. But I would particularly-
Any theories?
There's, the economy's doing a little bit better. I mean, there was a period of time from like 2008 to about maybe 2012, 2013, when school districts were cutting teachers in spades. And so there were a lot of out-of-work teachers. As things have begun to come back up again, districts are now starting to rehire people. So, I think we're seeing more teachers fill in jobs than being laid off from jobs.
So I think it's fair to say that we're all inclined to do whatever we can do to make sure that this is a fair district, we value the work that is being done and also help in the process, our, our school districts so that we can find the qualified folks whenever we need substitute teachers and not overburden our teachers who are asked to do that. So, as I'm looking at this, do you have any recommendation based on this? Or can we do all the more data collection and better understand what this means to us and make a decision based on that instead of just-
Sure, just tell me the information you want and-
Uh, the one thing that actually intrigues me is whether or not this situation that you shared, John, when we need a substitute teacher, whether in the majority of times or a good chunk of times, we find ourselves going to an internal resource. Is that, is that a, if it's so common that you can say, oh, yeah, that's basically what it is, you know, half the time that's what happens, that's fine too. You don't have to go and do major data collection for that.
I would only say that I think that right now we're in somewhat of an emergency situation. And I say that because in the next couple of months historically is when teachers are going to be calling out. Family members are sick, you know, we have a lot of young staff where they have family members today. You know, alone, we had two teachers that were out because their children are sick. And, you know, so we're getting into November, December and January. Right now, I believe we have three subs on call that we rely on. And after that three mark, it can become very burdensome to our staff.
I would be, sorry.
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna say, so in that case, thank you for, for sharing that. Judy, you have experience in Belcher Town. Provided, you know, given that there is an urgency and you come from that district, I'm assuming things were relatively better over there based on the rates that they have, which is only slightly different than ours, but-
Well, there was a couple of things that actually the administrative assistant to the superintendent did to be proactive about this because she was trying to meet with substitutes as they were being brought on board to, you know, do paperwork and all that business with them. And one of the people talked about having gone to a substitute fair in another district. And they actually, she and the central office staff organized the whole thing. They actually organized a substitute fair where, hi, we're gonna have, the first time it was just like, hi, come in with your stuff and interview. And the principals and the sped director and whatever were all in various places in central office and did people just grab people and it was a little chaotic. So they said then, sign up for like a twenty-minute block and the interviews were passed along. So it was like an evening where the administration was present from like four to six PM or something like that. People would come in, they would sign up for a slot to interview, you know, so all, you know, high school people would go to, say, you and Ally, you know, sped people would go to, you know, whatever and just get in so that we could process a lot at once. And that was a pretty popular way to do it, we found. There were quite a few people who actually came to that, got the word out that Belcher Town's gonna have-
Were these rates allowing you to do that?
Those rates were passed, I want to say, either three or four years ago, maybe more, like four years ago, when they were doing sixty dollars a day flat. And they were having a hard time getting substitutes. And so I recommended that they do sixty-five and seventy, and that did help the pool, I have to say, the rate increase.
So I guess where my thoughts are going, is that, is that a model that we can replicate?
Licensed and unlicensed, sure. And if you're-
With, with those rates, do you think it's, it's good enough? Or should we then think about something else?
Well, if you've got Hadley and North Hampton, which also are not far from here, doing seventy and seventy-five, it might behoove you to step it up a notch. Like I say, if we're hiring by the period, times six periods a day, times the contractual amount, you're paying way more than that anyway.
So your recommendation is the Hadley rates?
Yeah.
So I guess I would be curious to know what the difference is for cost for that line item. Just, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna be able to be penny to penny, but as an estimate, wouldn't it be helpful to know what kind of difference we're talking about? Make sure that we can absorb that cost.
Well, and I know that in FY15, I think you overspent in the sub-line anyway and I'm not sure if that's a pattern past that, I'd have to go checking. But again, it, the flip side is you don't do anything with the rates. You're going to that model and you're paying twenty-something dollars a class period, times six class periods. You're paying fifty dollars more a day than you are a flat rate.
Can I ask, when we looked at the sub-line that's overspent last year, when we use teachers for by period by period, are we paying them out of the sub-line? Is that, that's what I'm trying to figure out is-
Yeah, that's where it would come from.
Is that why it was, okay.
Yeah.
And that's some, you know, that's what I was trying to say too. Is the reason for the gap that we had last year?
Because we had to do that?
Because a good chunk of the substitution was made by our own teachers. Is that what, is that what it was? Is it fair to say?
I don't know, I don't know. I would have to do some digging to find out how much of that. Mary keeps pretty good records, so I would-
Because there are, I mean, there are two ways of looking at it. One, one possibility would be potentially that we immediately see, yes, that model is actually costing us much more and there is a lot of benefit in going this way. Great, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward, we can do that. The other could be, although more concerning, that we have this unexpectedly high substitution need which exceeds our line item in our budget, which was, you know, fairly large last year. And we're likely to repeat that, then I, at least I would like to better understand why and why we're not really budgeting for whatever we are seeing or why we have such high, higher-than-expected substitution rates.
That's why we are going to zero this budgeting, to do that. To do that very work.
And I also want to know, um, hypothetically, if we do this, what would be the benefit? Other benefits, I'm hearing what John is saying, that maybe teachers would feel less pressured. Maybe there would be more time spent on prep than, I mean, it, how significant is that, in other words?
It's pretty significant. If you ask somebody to give up the one period a day that they have to get prepared for the next day's lessons, that's pretty significant.
And, and quite honestly, Dan, there'd be a savings here. And I say that because contractually, teachers are, and, and I do, you know, the sheet each day, they get paid thirty dollars to cover a class. So if there's five classes and I need to, you know, find five teachers to cover five classes during the course of the day.
That's double seventy-five.
Right, right.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, you know, so right there, there's a savings, so, you know, and that's probably, I would think, in the last few years, we will be spending in that account because we have tried to rely on in-house, you know, teachers covering, uh, classes.
So that's what I would want to know. If we were to follow through on these changes, I would want to know at the end of the year what, what the real benefits are. I want to, you know, like, I want to know, did, how much money we saved? Um, and maybe somebody reporting back and saying, okay, well, this is what, the teachers are thrilled, or, I don't, I, I would like to know something.
And I think it was only about five or six years ago when we moved from fifty-five dollars to sixty-five dollars. Remember, for the longest time, we were at fifty-five dollars paying, and we went up ten dollars, like I said, it may have been five or six years ago that we were.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all, all these things that we talked about, obviously would be of concern. Did I interrupt you, Jen?
Oh, no, I was just noting that North Hampton also offers eighty dollars per day for retired teachers. Is that something we'd be considering, or is that not, would you just want to do two-tiered?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, so it's.
It's one of the later counts.
Okay, so now I have it in front of me.
So, yeah, North Hampton has three, they have seventy dollars a day on license, seventy-five licensed, and eighty dollars per retired.
Yeah.
It's kind of an interesting way to market. If we're, have a shortage, it would seem that, you know, being able to market to certain, to the people and catwalk them like a job fair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a good way to introduce that. Gramby has new rates, you know?
Yeah, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right, and we're all in.
If I were, if I were, I would follow up in North Hampton, again, those were numbers that Anne Marie had gotten for me, um.
I wonder if that's popular.
I, I wonder if it's their retired teachers or if it's any retired teacher, because that might also make a difference in terms of, hi, if you worked in North Hampton and you're now retired from North Hampton, we're gonna give you this extra incentive to come back and work. Um, you know.
Still have something.
I do. There's just a couple of things just to think about, is that in the past, um, I mean, the subbing situation right now is at its all-time worst. Where people, it's almost like, you know, Anne Marie has forewarned us if we will or will not have a sub, you know? And so a lot of us are having to really make hard choices about leaving our classrooms and not knowing who's gonna be in there, et cetera. The one thing that's changed this year is that the principals have taken over the whole interviewing process. Um, Anne Marie was always able to pull people together. Um, I don't know if, you know, if it's the whole electronic, um, applying now online that has got people a little bit jarred, or, or what, but it just seems like, you know, there's this new entity and process and how we're doing it, and now we have no subs. And to the point where we have, you know, classes that don't have an extra para who are, you know, are supposed to, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's really, it's not a good situation.
So what, what would be the significance of, of the application process?
I mean, before, it was a paper and pen kind of a thing. The person actually physically had to hand their application into Anne Marie face to face. You know what I mean? Like, it was very personal, whereas now it's, you know, it's behind a computer screen. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but we were actually able to generate subs and we have them. Um, and it just seems like now it's just different. And all of a sudden, now we have this vacancy.
I don't think, I don't think it has to do with the form of application, because the, the pro- the platform that we use goes out to School Spring, and there are a lot of people on School Spring.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking that's kind, that, that, that has to be the way it's done overall.
Yeah, I mean, most school districts use School Spring for all their job stuff, or use the same platform that we're using. So I don't think that the electronic piece is the piece. Um, I, Gramby is probably one of the few districts that was not having principals interview subs, because I talked to colleagues about that, you know, how does that happen? Well, when we get an application, it goes to the principal of the appropriate school and, you know, therefore, the principal then brings the sub in, makes sure that they're a suitable candidate, and there has to be some sort of screening process at a professional le- at a professional level. So I don't think that's the problem either. I think it's, I truly believe it is a, a rate problem. And I think doing those substitute fairs, um, like Belchertown did, just by the, um, process of having an event, you know? Hi, come on night X, sign up for a twenty-minute interview, you'll get an interview right there with the principal. The principal, if it was a good match, the principal would say, hi, welcome aboard that night, and go see the people for, you know, your paperwork. And there would be other times when they would say, we'll let you know. You know, uh, you'll hear it from us. And, you know, so it's pretty much, if the principal was okay with it, the administrative assistant and the secretary in the office had the pat, had the, uh, payroll packets ready. Hi, so-and-so said for me to come see you to get a packet. Here you go, and we were done. Um, so, you know, it, it happened pretty, the turnaround was pretty quick.
So, so thank you for all that.
There's just one more thing. The other thing is too, is as you consider going forward with the increases, which seems very reasonable, the only thing is, is that Unit D paraprofessionals, um, right now, they make like fourteen-something an hour at the, you know, at the very low end, like a first year, whatever. And right now, it's about like a four-fifty differential between a sub and a para. If you start coming up, you're now narrowing that gap. And, you know, that's, that's a concern from a Unit D perspective.
Yeah, but fourteen-something an hour, times six hours is eighty-nine dollars a day, so that's more than four-fifty.
Right.
So I don't know, where's the four-fifty coming from as an?
Well, I was doing it by the hourly rate, because.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, when you look at it as a daily rate, if it's eighty-nine, I think it's eighty-nine seventy-six, I did the math. Um, and a paraprofessional sub right now is sixty dollars, so.
No, I just meant a regular paraprofessional, you know what I mean? Versus just a regular sub coming in. Would you be not increasing, if you're doing the teacher one, not increasing the?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm saying we need to look at all of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just concerned about the narrowing of those amounts.
So we're looking at all of these?
Well, again, nurses, nurses seem to be on par. Pretty much everybody who's doing something is doing, you know, twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
Um, where I was able to get those numbers. Para's are a little more all over the map. Um, we do sixty dollars a day, which is the equivalent of a ten dollars an hour. Um, Belchertown, I believe the ten sixty-six may have been the bottom of their para.
Okay.
Um, scale.
So isn't pa- uh, para, uh, pay subject to negotiations?
Right, actual para pay, but you could set a sub-rate.
Is there all sub, okay.
You could set a sub-rate.
Okay.
You know, other people are doing like nine-something an hour, which is less than, than we are paying right now, Ludlow, North Hampton. South Hadley is at their base rate, eleven-twenty-five an hour, which turns out to be sixty-seven fifty per day.
Okay.
So the para's were a little more volatile in terms of what the rates were from the districts that, um, we were able to get that information from.
So do you recommend the same, um, thing, that what, what Hadley has for para's? Is that what you would recommend, or anything different?
Or maybe sixty-five a day for para's?
Okay.
A five-dollar bump up, so it doesn't get too close to the bottom step, but at least shows that we're trying to, uh, entice a little.
Actually, when you look at the para's, sixty-five puts us, uh, at a pretty nice place for now.
Mm-hmm.
Because we are at sixty, Belchertown is at sixty-three something.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Hadley's the only one at seventy higher.
Right.
Holyoke's sixty-three, Ludlow fifty-five fifty, North Hampton fifty-eight fifty.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
And at the base rate, it's South Hadley at sixty-seven fifty.
Right.
And that's just multiplying out by the number of hours.
So given, given that there's urgency, uh, I, I would offer one of two things, and, you know, the committee can decide to go an alternative way as well. Uh, we can go with Hadley teachers and, uh, then up paraprofessionals to sixty-five. Or if we need any more information, any more data to be able to make that decision, we can table it till our next meeting on the sixteenth. Uh, and I'm going with the suggestion, hearing the urgency around this, uh, given that there is, uh, uh, there is a shortage, and John said that this month and next month, we are
Yeah.
particularly vulnerable if, uh, we don't have a good plan.
The other issue is custodians, we have no custodial subs, and they will not come and work for ten dollars an hour. They just won't.
So what would you suggest?
Um, Belchertown does twelve eighty-one an hour, which is probably, was tied to a contract. Ludlow does fourteen an hour. The bottom of the custodial sk- uh, salary schedule is fourteen ninety-something or other an hour. Um, so I would say that at least looking at maybe thirteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
As a minimum for custodians, and just see if that hourly, hourly rate helps. And I think it's due again in part the fact that the economy is starting to come back a little bit. So people who were laid off from.
Are getting jobs.
You know, jobs at Home Depot or other places are getting jobs, obviously for way more than ten bucks an hour. So even doing a second shift, if they work first shift somewhere else, um, ten dollars is not enough.
If we're not at the bottom of the pay scale, why, why do thirteen? I mean, I, you know, I would rather not have to revisit this, I would rather do this right first time around.
Then I would say, if you're gonna be just a scosh under, or you could do, all of the custodians in this district all have years of experience. There's nobody on step one. So if you wanted to tie it to step one of the custodians' salary schedule, you could do that.
You said fourteen ninety-nine, but obviously we're not really lower than Belchertown, which is at twelve eighty-one, or Ludlow, which is at fourteen.
Yeah, so you could do fourteen.
That's what I was thinking, fourteen.
Okay, so.
Sorry I came in late, but what, what, what's gonna be the budgetary implications? What, what's in the?
We're, we're, we're still working through that.
Well, I mean, that's my first question, because we, if we buzzed it only so much, and I don't know how that thinking was done, to put in the sub-account, X amount of teachers, times how many days do they take, and do the math.
We talked about that.
I think, I think, I think that's one of those phrases I don't allow anybody to say, it's just always been that way.
Yeah.
But.
And I don't mean it's hasn't been that way, but it's, it's a budgetary implication that has to be considered now, especially when we have issues.
But as John, as John aptly mentioned, pretty much we are so low on subs right now. He, we're paying thirty dollars a class, times five, in some cases, maybe, you know, even six classes. Five classes a day, anyway, um.
But is it, but raising it five dollars, is that gonna bring people in to take care of the issue? I don't, I don't believe that's gonna happen.
So we don't know that.
That's the sixty thousand dollar question, Jim.
The feedback that I'm getting from Anne Marie Sapowski is that oftentimes, she will call somebody and they won't, if she calls the day before, they won't answer her, because they're gonna wait and see if somebody who pays more will call them.
Right, that's, that's a natural thing, but.
Yeah.
So Jim, the suggestion was that the, the, the pay is, is an issue based on what we can see. Um, as far as the budget impact, it looks like when we cannot find a substitute, we actually use a, an existing teacher in the school system, which, uh, based on our calculation, uh, ends up being twice as costly. So instead of, say, seventy-five dollars, uh, per license, we end up paying something close to a hundred and fifty dollars?
That's only in seven through twelve, how about K through six? What's happening there?
Para's are being pulled, you know, you gotta have people in front of kids.
But para's are getting, para's are getting the regular pay, they're not getting any additional, or are they? They do get a little bit additional by their contract, if it's X amount of time, they do get a little bit additional. So it's really not impacting the elementary then, as much as it is, I mean, is that why we had, I remember last year's budget, there was a lot of substitute overage.
That's what I have to.
Is that why too? Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, I don't know if that's raising it five dollars is gonna make that difference.
It won't, it won't hurt it, right?
Right, it will help.
What is it?
It would only help it.
Right, it'll make it more likely they would choose us.
Yeah, what's the downside, Jim? What's the downside if we, if we don't do it? What's the downside? I mean, if we do do it.
If, if, I mean, it's a good question, I don't know, but I think I'm more concerned of the budgetary side, because that's, that's essentially the biggest thing that's hanging over us, is that, you know, we're already short on other things, and now if we start to, uh, go over in that account, you know, we're having, we're creating more issues, I think.
I'm gonna tell you, Jim, we're gonna go over in that account. I'm just telling you, based on.
But especially if we keep using teachers.
Right, we, i- if we continue with the model that we have, which is, people are telling us we're not paying enough, and we're doing five periods a day, times thirty dollars an hour.
Well, how many people, let me ask you, and, and again, if this went over, I apologize. How many people are on the sub-list that come and sub in Gramby Junior High School presently? If I had a sub-list in front of me, who would I call? Do I call fifteen people, five people, twenty-five people? Who's on that list?
So right now, we're at three people, Jim, to be honest with you.
Three.
And once we go over three, like today, we were at four, and we were scrambling around for that fourth individual. We've had, we've had three, um, you know, it's Donna, it's Kurt, and it's James Bro. You know, those are the three that we have, and I would think that, you know, that you, you know, James works at two elementary schools, am I correct? Or at least he's met all Kristen, is Jim Bro there at West Trace?
No, he doesn't, yeah, he doesn't come these, no.
So, and, and like I said, it's only gonna get worse in the next couple of months, as you know, Jim, with the, you know, winter months approaching.
Yeah.
And the illnesses and whatnot.
Well, I, maybe we'll help, but I just don't think that all of a sudden is gonna bring fifteen more people onto the sub-list because we're paying five dollars more a day. Unless you make it for a lot more a day, then you could create zip up.
We were looking at ten, and.
Yeah.
We were looking at the Hadley.
We're looking at Hadley. So let's just repeat what we have, and I would like to make the same suggestion. And if we are not comfortable, and if we feel like we need a little more information, we can wait until next time.
Okay.
Uh, it may be, it may be tough the next two weeks, if, you know, there is additional demand coming your way, but at least everybody would be on the same page and would feel comfortable. So, Jim, what we were talking about is, for the teachers, it would be seventy dollars per day for unlicensed, seventy-five dollars per day licensed. For para's, it would go up to sixty-five dollars from sixty dollars per day. And for custodians, it would go to fourteen dollars, which apparently is still, uh, a pretty reasonable rate, we're at ten dollars an hour, which is the lowest of low, I guess, at this point.
And we have no custodial subs, so basically what's happening is, if a custodian is out, work is not getting done.
Right. And it would still save us money, because no one right now is at that fourteen dollar rate, so
Right.
a sub would be less than what we're normally paying anyway.
Well, and I mean, the, the shift isn't just even getting covered.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's, that's, so, the, the flip side of that is that cleaning and, and.
Isn't getting done.
Isn't getting done, so that's not safe and healthy for kids either, so that's not a good situation.
So based on this conversation, these are the numbers that we have. If there is, uh, enough, uh, comfort with these numbers, we can see if we want to go ahead with these numbers. If not, if anybody would like to have more information, more data by our, uh, November sixteenth meeting, we can do that as well and table it.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I want to make sure that we do have some follow-through on how this is all working.
Yes.
Agreed, absolutely.
So that's actually, that's a very good point.
I don't want this to fall through the cracks. I, I want this on a, you know, a regular, ongoing check-in basis.
Yep.
Otherwise, I will make a motion.
I agree. So before you do that, I will second that, because I still don't know what percentage of the substitution has been done internally versus outside. Whether or not the, the overage that we saw last year, and the overage that you're expecting to see this year, is due to that factor, or there are some others playing in? And if it turns out that we're not budgeting enough for that line item.
Right.
We should be prepared for it before.
I mean, and that's what we're working on now that, uh, the end of the year report is done, you know? Archie, I'm gonna sit down with him on Thursday and just say, I need some, or talk to him on Thursday, say, we need some trend analyses and certain things as we gear up for FY seventeen, and this is one of them. You know, how many, Anne Marie would have that stuff, I, I asked her to work on that tomorrow, she would start working on that. How many subs have we used? How many teachers have we used that's, you know, impacted, whatever? Um, it may take them a little time to gather those numbers, but I think we can do some trend analysis that will say, you know, we've overspent by twenty percent over the past three years. We need to then think about increasing the line by twenty percent. I think it's been, again, part of this sort of reactionary mode, knowing you're shooting for a number.
And can we get the cost of? And can we get the cost of the number of subs that we used and what that would've cost if it was only a sub versus using a teacher?
And we could look at how many days of absence and whether we did it internally or externally, and that would tell you.
That would help, because I think those numbers would bring some clarity.
To be honest
You know, we might, we might be overspending on the line item, but, you know, we're over, we could, we could've overspent by twenty-five percent versus forty-five percent had we only used
Right. Outside.
Outside people.
And you mentioned earlier the zero-based budgeting. And I think as we move forward, we're gonna need analyses like this almost all the time because we want to be ahead of this as opposed to reacting to it because reacting is almost always more expensive and not as effective. Are you okay with this approach?
That's fine. I have, I'm sorry I missed something.
No, that's fine.
A few questions about it, so, I mean, it's fine. I don't wanna vote against it, but I just may abstain at this point.
The other information
I just, I ask, has anything changed since, why, why less subs?
I think it's an uptick in the economy, to be honest with you, Jim.
Nothing else has changed internally?
Well, we talked about the letters of reference.
Yeah.
Was, was a new expectation. The application process is different. It's going through school spring versus
Paper and
Paper. The principals are doing the interviewing and hiring versus Anne Marie, who's done it in the past.
But we're just, I'm, I'm having a hard time making a connection between those changes and this drastic shortage. I'm just having a hard time, like, I can see it being a contributing factor, but the only factor, unless I'm missing something really substantial.
Is, are computers provided? Like, can someone come in and apply on a computer here at the school?
Yeah, David, David is more than happy to, you know.
I mean, but is that no?
I don't think that's known, but
Because most, I mean, just most HR places would, would offer that or offer paper in addition to their computer. I mean, if we're at such a, if, if our backs are against the wall so much and it's affecting, it's going to affect morale, of course. It's gonna affect teacher burnout. It's gonna affect special needs kids who need their pairs. Would it be a horrible thing to provide paper applications in temporary basis? To see if it would, you know, what would be the drawback of providing another opportunity for people to apply?
Or if we were to do something like a substitute fair and just say, if you don't have access, which in 2015, I still have a hard time with the, I don't have access to a computer deal, but
My office is in R from an HR and our computer banks are filled with people applying for jobs who don't have access otherwise.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're applying for a sixty-five dollar a day sub position, you may not have internet access at home.
But we could certainly do that as part of a sub fair or in advance of, hi, we're gonna have a substitute fair. We're gonna have computers open on day X, Y, or Z at such and such place in, in, you know, Granby Public Schools, so you can come in and apply online, I mean, and try and make it more accessible. I don't have broadening and those things.
I also see that as being an exception. I don't see that as contributing to such a crisis state of shortage that we're in. You see, like, I could see that, you know, that might impact, you know, a few people who are having a hard time applying, but we're at a crisis shortage of, of, I find it hard to believe that
I think it's the rate of pay coupled with teachers being rehired who were let go in droves in, in the early two thousands. I really do.
So, I'm glad Jim mentioned the list because I really don't know the process through which we reach out to the subs and then ask for their availability. So, if we're looking at a list of three names, that's a problem by itself. I mean, regardless of what we do, any one of these things that we're talking about, if we only have, you only have three people to call in the morning, that's a problem. How do we change that and make that list a little larger? There is no guarantee that any one of these things that we are trying to do is gonna be an immediate remedy. So, just because we change the rates, tomorrow, your list, John, more than likely will not grow to ten fifteen. We'll take a little time to communicate and reach out to others. As far as the budget impact, we should have that conversation, the sooner, the sooner, the better. Because especially, I'm concerned now, especially because you mentioned that we are likely to go over and, you know, I would like to better understand whether there's any mitigation that we can do part of.
Well, I think the reason why we'll go over is exactly what John has been saying, is that having to go to the well internally.
From, aside from that, as I look at the numbers around and I look at our rates, even from a comparability and fairness perspective, I don't think we are going overboard here by looking at a combination of Hadley and some other number and saying, seventy, seventy-five for teachers, sixty-five for pairs, and what is it, thirteen or fourteen for the, fourteen for the custodians? So, again, I will, I would like to offer two options. If we're not comfortable to have this motion today, we can finalize it next time. If you are comfortable, if there is a motion to go with us, for teachers, seventy dollars per day for unlicensed, seventy-five per day for licensed, for pair professionals, sixty-five dollars per day, and for custodians, fourteen dollars per hour, I would like to entertain that motion if anybody would like to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, concerns, comments, statements? No? Okay. I saw all in favor to approve the changes to the sub rates as stated. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Yeah, I'd just like, unfortunately, I'd elect abstain.
Okay.
Even though it passes, but I just
Yes, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And so, could this be added as an agenda item to the next meeting as well as a follow-up? What we're talking about is data, or is this a couple of months out, or is this next year, or?
It depends on what kinds of data you need and knowing that I have to crank it out in two weeks.
Well, no, I, I, I think, just, just, just
The one that would be good.
Forget I made that statement because I saw the look on your face.
Two weeks and how much data do you want?
Three months, three months.
Judy, can we, can we find the ratio of internal versus external substitution?
Yeah.
Last year and this year so far, if possible.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And if we make an assumption that we will succeed with these new rates to find the proper subs each time we need them, whether or not that will help the overage that you anticipate. Because I don't know what conditions actually or what assumptions lead you to believe that there will be an overage. At least I would like to be ahead of that and see whether there's anything we can do about that. So, if we assume that we're going with these rates and from now on, this will eliminate the problem of having to look inside and we're gonna have a list that John can call in the morning,
I would say they're eliminated, but it certainly would make a dent in it, to say, to say the least. Because as John stated, you're coming into months when teachers and their families
Yep.
are gonna wind up being ill. And so, you know, you then come up against needing more on a day. And if, you know, the collaborative, for example, is offering a workshop that a lot of teachers want to go to and then all of a sudden you get a barrel of folks who call in sick, then, you know, you've got the knowns versus the last minutes.
Yeah. Even with the assumption that all substitution now will be done by calling outside resources and
Well, as much, in as much as we are poss, we can do that. I can guarantee you that
Well, I, I understand that. What I'm trying to understand is this. If, for instance, you come back and say, you know what, with the assumption that everything was gonna come from outside, we were gonna call some, a list of outside resources to come and substitute, we are still in the red, that would lead me to believe that our estimate for the budget was not accurate. It was off. And next year, we should not make the same mistake again.
Right, absolutely. No, no, no. We're gonna do a trend analysis in this and going into FY seventeen.
When do these rates increase?
It's effective immediately, right, the rates? Yeah.
For tomorrow?
Yeah.
Soon enough? Tomorrow?
Um, or could we say
Well, no, I was just curious because I know we have subs that are already listed, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's effective immediately.
Could we say effective, I'm just trying to think of pay periods for Mary so it doesn't make her
Actually, that's why I hesitated.
We get paid this Friday.
Right, which means the pay period won't end until the
So, it could be effective today.
The thirteenth.
Tomorrow, or Wednesday.
So, so if we get paid this Friday, the new pay cycle
That, that means the pay period started today.
It could, it could start Wednesday.
So, we could start Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday?
Yep.
The fourth?
Yep.
Fourth, the new pay period.
All right.
All right, thank you. After this brief conversation, we'll move on to
Another brief conversation.
The enrollments, yes.
October one counts. I put in your packet, the October one counts for grade levels from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen. I will tell you that there has been some problems at the state level trying to get those numbers certified. I mean, they are accurate counts. They just haven't been certified with the DSE at this point, and it's not on our end. It's theirs. So, it does give you an opportunity to see what the enrollment rates have been and are at this particular moment. We are right now, as of October first, at eight nineteen.
Seth, first of all, thank you again for these numbers. And what I looked at first was the change from eighth grade to ninth grade. And I went back to two thousand nine, started with that. So, kids who were, say, eighth graders in two thousand nine, what happened to that same class in two thousand ten? So, going that way, you know, it was down three, it was down, actually, it was up after that. It was then, it was down. I don't know why it was down so much, but at least, you know, there was some, some explanation potentially. The biggest gaps that we start seeing, if you go to two thousand thirteen especially, from seventy-four, we go down to sixty-three. And this past year and to this year, from seventy-three, we go down to fifty-one. So, I don't know.
Did we have an increase in Pathfinder? Was that one of the reasons, I think?
Yes.
Pathfinder's probably one.
Yeah, Pathfinder's probably one, I would say, one reason. There are thirty-five students at Macduffie right now that are Granby students, so we do know that. We do know that there are some choice issues that happen at the high school level. And again, I think some of the things that John is trying to do with, you know, advanced placement, virtual high school, things like that, that word really needs to, to get out more in terms of the fact that we are broadening and expanding both the number of courses and the rigor in the courses that we offer.
So, on that one, let me quickly ask this. Is there anything that we can do as a school committee to help, however it needs to be pushed? Do you need any assistance from the school committee to make that available? Because that was the whole purpose of creating a larger portfolio of classes. So, it would attract a lot more students. Is there anything that we can help with?
Well, I think certainly John and I have talked about both bringing the virtual high school. You know, you've had the AP kids come. Obviously, that's on camera as well. And the virtual high school kids, you know, come in and talk about their experiences as they're nearing the end of their first semester courses would be also something that I think we should do, get a press release out about that. The AP stuff to get a press release in Sentinel. I didn't see it in any other paper though, did you, John?
I did send it to the other papers as well.
Yeah.
They just didn't publish it.
I have, I would say, a decent relationship with Eric Goldschneider from the Gazette, so, you know, he keeps asking me when the NEASC report is going to come out, and I told him, you know, we'd issue a press release. So, I think he's interested in those kinds of things. I am doing stuff from my blog out to the press as well. So, oftentimes, I'll get calls from Amy Henderson. So, like the Coffee and Conversation thing, I know she ran a couple of weeks in the Sentinel, the survey. So, I think that just trying to mine those relationships a little bit more and get the word out in some way, shape, or form in terms of whatever, and obviously, your, your willingness to have them come visit. The school committee, I think, is, is an important thing as well, just to recognize teachers and kids for the work that they're, that they're doing in some of these advanced placement courses. But if you don't mind a couple of minutes, and I promise to go real fast, I have an abridged version of what you saw at the collaborative that might just be kind of interesting. So, Jennifer and Deanne, you're about to get
Blinded.
Blinded.
This is the sharp version.
Okay.
Can I just, sure, just, just for maybe thirty seconds or less, just kind of talk about Embry and that question you were on because I'm very familiar with that as well. And I would sort of cluster it in four areas, you know, that are sort of equal, why we have such an important number of those kids. Why we have about twenty kids or so from eighth to nine. One is that Pathfinder, I would say, makes up a quarter of those kids. I would say the other thing is that we had an unusual year where kids decided to just go back to their home districts. You know, if they live in South Hadley, they decided to go to South Hadley High School. If they decided, you know, if they lived in Bellcradown, they went to Bellcradown High School, whatever it might be, it was just decisions that they made. The other thing was choice. You know, we had a family member who lives, who teaches at Chickaby Comp that brought, you know, and we see those sometimes in years that's kind of out of our control where kids just make the choice to go to Chickaby Comp or choice out for whatever reason. And then the other thing is that, you know, Macduffie as well. So, before you know it, you take five, 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 and five, and that, you know, equates to twenty. And it was, you know, a lot of kids for that given year.
So, Pathfinder is, is good to know.
Absolutely.
We can't, we can't do about Pathfinder. It's a vocational school. It actually offers services that we don't or can't. And that's, that's, that's good to know.
Right. Plus, they do things for our community as well.
Exactly, they do.
So, I think that, you know.
But the other ones, I would be curious to find out, despite our best efforts, if some students who opted to come to Granby after a certain period of time, they decide to go back to their original districts? And some of our students, on top of that, decide to leave our district and go out. And out of the twenty that we're seeing, let's say, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, except for five, the other students had some reasons to leave our district, whatever they might be.
They moved or whatever. Yeah.
I, I would, I, I think that's, that's the conversation that we've been having, that it would be great to find out what are those drivers? Is this something that we can do to help? If it's not, if they say, you know what, I'm moving to, I don't know, a faraway city, town, state, we can't do anything about that. But if they say, you know what, I came in, but I could not find whatever I was looking for. It would've been nice. I would've stayed because I made some friends in the last couple of years, but honestly, I have to leave because of this and that. It may give us some good opportunity to work on those things.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of military families, but we do have some military families. And obviously, people get stationed somewhere else and off they go, so. David Olson, data guru at the collaborative, I guess would be his colloquial title. I'm not sure what his real title is, but he is the data guru. I have never seen somebody crunch munglers like this guy crunches in my life.
That's what we call him, too.
But he did a rather extensive population study for both Franklin and Hampshire counties because the collaborative, of course, services both counties. And did some things around population census stuff and did some history of looking at some things. So, you kind of notice that in this particular first slide, that there is a decline in birth rates. That the data for both counties indicates that fewer, you know, ten to twenty fewer students are available to enter first grade each year per county because there's just that decline in live births. So, you know, he extrapolated to, you know, by twelve grades, you could expect to see a hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty fewer students per year in public schools by county, not by district, but for the whole county. In this particular slide, he shows some, again, county public school enrollments. You know, he's got some formulas in there that I'm not quite even sure what those are, but that's okay. You know, but again, this does just show that, you know, both counties are experiencing declines in population. Hampshire County in the past couple of years has actually been fifty percent more than expected. Hampshire County in the past couple of years has actually been a fifty percent more than expected decline versus whatever. And again, most of this is following birth rates. Here's some interesting data that he shared with us in terms of the fact that more than ninety percent of all students attend public schools, that that's actually been slowly increasing um over the past couple of decades. We lead in Hampshire County along with Franklin County, the number of homeschooled students by county. You know, in in the Commonwealth. Uh, and that actually, overall, the number of students in private schools has been decreasing. But I think because we have one situated within our borders, that that's a little anomaly for us. Here's the percentage of students who are um schooled at home and Hampshire, you're that orange, Franklin's the top blue, and Hampshire County's in underneath it. So um you can see that even from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, there's been a roughly quarter increase, you know, percentage wise in in the number of students who are being schooled at home. Um, so, you know, um, not a huge definitive because as you can see, there was a sort of a, uh, an uptick, then a little bit down, and now it's back up again. Um, so.
Do you know how many we have here in Granby that you approve?
I don't off the top of my head, Jim, to be honest, but that's a number I could find out.
I think it's a couple, it was a pretty small number based on, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's it's very many. I would say it's less than ten. Hampshire County is sort of the brown in the middle of that um blob with the big dots. These are the numbers of students attending parochial schools. And again, a lot of parochial schools have closed. So, you know, you're seeing a downtick in in the number of um percentage of kids attending parochial schools. If you notice in two thousand five, it was about nine percent in Hampshire County. Now it's more like seven percent. So there are less and less students going to parochial schools in the county as well. Trends of charter and uh school choice. Charter schools, um, both are on the rise. And you can see, um, you know, Hampshire County is the red on the bar graph on the left, which is in percent of students attending charter schools. In two thousand eleven, it was slightly more than two percent. It's now about two point six percent of all students in Hampshire County who are now attending charter schools. So that number's on the rise. Um, and then, uh, Hampshire County, I lost you again. You are the, were the gray dotted line kind of in the middle of that line graph of fraction of students using school choice. And again, uh, it's gone from back in two thousand four to slightly less than four percent. Over eleven years, we're now seeing over six percent of all students in Hampshire County um making use of school choice. These are, this is Franklin County numbers, which are not particularly relevant, but here is Hampshire County, and I highlighted Granby, um, the number of average number of students attending charter schools. And then, um, the four-year average of percent of students attending charter schools. So when you look at us compared to other districts in terms of charter schools, um, we don't have as high a percentage as many other of the towns around us. And percentage wise, we're only, you know, we're like fourth from the bottom.
PVPA is a, is considered a charter school.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, probably a good chunk of that is students who decide to go to PVPA.
Yeah, yeah. And Chinese immersion is another one that tends to draw kids as well, and that's um, that's a charter school. When you look at the net choice gain or loss, you'll notice that Granby is actually on the gaining side in terms of overall numbers of kids um choosing to come to Granby.
Granby's number six. Uh, right to some point that, yeah.
Yeah. Where you've got districts like Ware, Greenfield, East Hampton, who are, you know, the net is a loss and by quite a bit. You know, even Belchertown is a loss by a little bit in terms of choice. So again, um, the average, and they, they're calling, he's calling this full-time equivalency, um, you know, enrollments, kids who have been here for a year. So, you know, we're over and above by about seventy-seven odd kids choicing in versus choicing out. So that's the net gain. This is the net gain or uh loss relative to district enrollment. And again, a three-year average net choice gain uh for Granby, uh, looking at it from a percentage standpoint, you know, are, is like about eight percent. The net gain, and it certainly is not a loss by any stretch of the imagination. So while we know that there are some kids in some spots where they are going out to choice of charters, overall, pre-K through twelve, that's not the big issue. The big issue is the decline in birth rates. And we're just seeing that because we're a small district anyway. We're graduating larger classes, and you're looking at the numbers, little or smaller ones are coming through, you know.
The decline in the upper grades is pretty significant. It's, I don't, you know, I, I mean, I agree that the birth rate um situation is a huge factor going forward. But I also think the current data is reflecting the downward trend in the upper grades.
Right. But if you look at like kindergarten, you had sixty-nine kids in two thousand nine, sixty kids in two thousand ten, sixty-two in two thousand eleven, sixty-six, oh, excuse me, sixty-seven in two thousand eleven, forty-four in two thousand twelve, forty-nine in two, twenty thirteen, forty-nine in twenty fourteen, forty-four in twenty fifteen. I mean, there was a significant, between two thousand eleven and two thousand and twelve, a significant decrease in the numbers of kindergarten children coming through the door.
To be, to be honest, I mean, first of all, the fact is that we're still net positive. And the numbers are pretty high. Um, there are reasons for that too. And as we're asking about the reasons why some students are not staying in, it would be great to find out what are the reasons for some of the other students that are coming here in pretty large numbers for a district our side. But, uh, just to be fair, um, the decision for, especially given that birth rate seems to be a problem. We are talking about the number of potential students from within our town declining. So if birth rate is not going to increase, the other side will be migration. So people will have to come to Granby. And uh, to be honest, uh, people are not just looking at the school system when they're making that decision, they're looking at the entire package. And so as much as we should look at every available data to find out whether or not we can help this, there is a larger picture out there that is potentially keeping some of these folks from moving to Granby, to, you know, to this community, uh, so that we can have this increase. So we all have to, whoever else wants to be part of it, have to be part of the conversation and see how we can help the overall situation, not only uh the enrollment situation. But this is, when you look at the numbers alone, without really trying to find a narrative behind it, in two thousand nine, we had eleven hundred twenty-five, one thousand one hundred twenty-five students. Just six years later, two, four, six, seven years later, we have three hundred and six fewer students in our school district. And that is, that is.
Big difference.
Big, a big difference.
Twenty-five percent change.
Yep.
Yeah. And if you force it a little, a little more, it's basically the size of our entire elementary population.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you for sharing this. Any questions, any other things that we need to share or talk about on this?
You also um have a membership with um Nesdeck. So Nesdeck, as one of the benefits, um, does a ten-year population projection. I know Kathy is at work feeding them the numbers they need so that they can give that report back to us. So once we have that, I will bring that back to you as well, just so that you can see. They use what they call a um cohort survival um method for um looking at, you know, how many kids are actually born in the town? How many kids actually come to school? Where's the in-and-out migration? And it's not a super detailed analysis, but it's an analysis enough that would sort of give you a long view ten years out from now as to what the population might look like. So when that report comes out, certainly I will share that with you as well, so that you've got a feel for what at least could be on the horizon uh in the long, in the long view.
Thank you.
It's good to remember too that it's somewhat cyclical, because when I graduated in ninety-one, my class was forty-three. So, and and you were right before me. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of cyclical. And I think that, you know, it depends on the economy, a lot of other things as to why people aren't moving in. So we just, it's good to remember that.
Just a question if I can, just, because I have it here, and um, the forty-four kindergarten kids, what's, what's our staff? What's the staff in kindergarten? Is that two? Forty-nine in first grade is two or three?
Three.
Three. Forty-eight in second is?
Two.
Two. Fifty-four in third is?
Three.
Three. And I know fourth is three, fifth is three, and sixth is four, right?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
That was an easy question.
Easy question.
Actually, can you say that again? Two in kindergarten?
Yep.
Three in first?
Three sections of first, two sections of second.
Yep.
Three sections of third.
Three of four.
Three of fourth, three of fifth, and four of sixth.
And how many in sixth?
Four sections.
Four. Okay.
Thank you.
And how about the pre-K?
Pre-K, there's a three-year-old classroom that's uh half-time and a four-year-old classroom that's full-time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is our community engagement update.
Yep. As I promised you at the last meeting, um, the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force will be getting underway on Tuesday, November seventeenth, starting at six o'clock. And pre-planning meeting with the police and fire chiefs on Friday along with a consultant we're going to be using to help us with that to get ready for the first meeting. So, um, hopefully, we're going to meet in this room. I need to just double check and confirm that with the, the high school to make sure that that's going to happen, so.
Were you able to find any students for that?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Two students, and I don't have the names with me, but.
Oh, good. Good, that's good. Thank you.
I think there's one middle schooler and one high schooler, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Um, the second group I talked to you about last time was this sort of community partners group trying to take a look at how we can help students with social emotional issues. We have targeted tentatively, um, November twelfth for doing that. I just have to find a space for us to meet because um I will probably do something where I, you know, bring lunch in or something like that so that, uh, you know, a conversation about some of the things, the issues that we're seeing here and what people in the community or other agencies can help us accomplish. So, um, that's a tentative date that I need to get firmed up in the next day or so, uh, so we can get that taken care of. And then last but not least is Coffee and Conversation with the Superintendent, um, Monday, November ninth. Bright and early for the early birds. I'm just going to have sort of an open rolling, come when you can, leave when you gotta, from seven to eight fifteen. I just need to double check with, um, for student, which I will be doing in the next couple of days. We just figured that if parents who had children from West Street, if we did it at East Middle, they could just pick up one of the buses and and shuttle over to, uh, West Street from, uh, East Middle. And then on the same day, I will do an evening session, um, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, um, also at East Middle, uh, in the library for all of that. And the topic will be the school building project.
Cool.
We have a meeting that night too.
The fourth? The ninth?
The ninth.
Oh, the ninth, yeah.
We being the superintendent to search?
We'll be over in East Middle, so we.
Oh, East Middle, sorry.
So we'll be out of your way. Yep.
Do you need help with that, that night?
Uh, if you want to come, that'd be great, sure.
The ninth, and you're going to talk about the school?
Yep. Both sections will be about the school. Um, the vast majority of people who just said they'd like to do something in the morning when they're dropping off their kids, or they'd like to come at night. We have very few people, I think, just a couple of people who said the afternoon was a good time for them, so. We'll see what happens.
What time was it in the East Meadow?
Uh, the morning one is seven to eight fifteen, and then the evening is six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Thank you. Same day, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Yes.
Hope we get some people.
You have the PD for?
Yep, you uh should have gotten the uh memorandum I sent out to staff so that you can see that, um, you know, we're starting to have conversations about curriculum and figuring out what the priority standards are. Some people will be having a workshop and trying to unwrap the standards and then, uh, doing some small work group, uh, kinds of things to get curriculum, uh, moving forward.
Well-organized day. I know it doesn't happen very easily.
No. I still have preps to do. The, uh, you know, nurses are going to do some certification for head injuries and look at what they need to do for their district determining measures of assessment. Paraprofessionals, Paula Fredericks is a consultant that we have hired, um, with regard to, uh, students on the autism spectrum as well as behavioral, autism behavioral analyst, uh, physician, who consults with our preschool and our kindergarten where we have, um, several students on the spectrum. But we have a lot of kids sprinkled throughout the district. And so, um, she's going to do a workshop for paraprofessionals in the morning on how to work with kids who are on the autism spectrum. And then in the afternoon, Pat Lynch is actually going to do a workshop for paraprofessionals on how to support teachers with, um, executive functioning, um, strategies for kids who have trouble with that.
I will echo what, uh, Jim said. Um, first of all, I don't know that we have this much visibility into what is planned for Professional Development Day, and thank you for that. On number two, it seems to be very well organized. Uh, thank you whoever, uh, has contributed to that. And also, um, the fact that you have expected outcomes, at least from my perspective, it's important that, you know, folks are not just coming together and, you know, talking about things, but not, uh, not knowing what should come out of it. I appreciated the fact that there were very clear outcomes expected, uh, from, from those meetings. So, so thank you for that.
Judy, just a quick question, because I remember all these things. What, the math assessment spreadsheet that elementary teachers, is that something that's related to the new math program?
Yes, it is. There is an assessment within that. Um, last year, the district bought into a program that was several thousand dollars and yielded no useful data. So I said, we are not going to spend money on something that's not going to give us anything we can use. So, um, what was found, and actually Kristen Naglari has taken the lead on this, um, what was found is a, um, an assessment package within the math series that allows us to dip in and see how students are doing. And she's put together a spreadsheet of scores so that teachers could input, you know, what the scores were that the kids got on the, on the assessment half. A way to track that.
Thank you.
So, yeah, um, I, this was new thinking on the part of the teachers, and I think there was a little angst, so I sent out a calm-down email. You know, I'm not trying to hit you over the head, I'm just trying to get the conversation started.
So is that enough to alleviate the angst?
That seems to have been. So it's just, uh, they're used to a four-line memorandum about what's going on. And I said, I'm used to writing a two-page memo, I'm sorry. I just be here, I'm trying to give you some detail to get the, uh, get your heads wrapped around.
We'll hope it works out well, if the day is successful.
So, we're good with that one? Okay. So we, in, under new business, we have our first reading of, um, section A of our policy manual.
Which was also included in your, uh, information in the policy subcommittee folder. So I should let the chair of the policy subcommittee speak, and I'll.
My brain is off.
I don't, I don't see it.
I don't see it.
It's in the policy subcommittee?
Oh, it's in our section.
In A section, yeah.
If you go to policy subcommittee folder?
Yeah, you can go back to that here.
Yep, in A section. Yep, in A section.
And basically, what we did was, um, a review of the Granby A section, plus we took a look at some, um, sample policies that other districts had. The two big policies that were missing from the A section was the policy on, uh, criminal background checks, the CORY policy, as well as the fingerprint policy, um, which I found kind of surprising that the CORY policy had not been in there before. Um, and then the other policies really just basically was a grammar tweak here and, uh, sentence change there, it was nothing earth-shattering, so not a whole lot has changed in this section of the policy manual, except the addition of the CORY and FCS.
This one, this has recommended.
There's a bunch of them here.
This one.
This one.
Yeah, so the wellness policy, um, we tweaked a couple of things in that. One, made a couple of other changes around, um, some other things. But like I said, the two big ones that were absent from your policy manual that, um, really needed to be in there were, um, the CORY requirements and the regulation. Anytime you see a, a policy that says hyphen R, that's a regulation or a procedure that accompanies the base policy, and then, um, uh, anything that's a hyphen E is an exhibit, so for example, under the, after the two CORY policies, there's information so that if somebody comes back, if a CORY comes back with a record, basically, we, we inform that person that, you know, some things have popped. Um, if they're not yours, 'cause obviously human beings do the data, and human beings make mistakes, there is a procedure that, through which they can go to get the record corrected, so that exhibit just tells them how that's done. And then, um, you know, the fingerprint policy was the other one, so.
Which wasn't in there at all.
I didn't get that in there. My bad, my gosh. So I will make sure that's in there. It is in your, um, in that subcommittee folder?
Yep.
As a separate thing, I will put it in the whole thing. Um, but what we discovered was that, um, there was not a fingerprint policy either. And the State Department of Education, about two years, two, three years ago, when this came out, came out with, um, a policy template, so I just basically borrowed it. So, I will get that, uh, dumped into the full thing, so that one is, uh, ready to go. So tonight, you wouldn't vote. This is just to let people know that, uh, actually, it is in ours. It just didn't make it into the table of contents, that's what happened.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah. But it is in the, it is in the, uh, policy manual itself, so.
So, a, a, as, uh, Dr. Hul said, what we're trying to do, we're comparing our policies and the list of policies to a few other districts, uh, that are either similar to us, or that may have something, um, different than ours, and then we compare the content, the context, to see whether or not we have to adopt something new. Even if the policy exists, if there is any, uh, substantial difference in, uh, the content and the language, we try to look for those differences, and then any correction needed, uh, we'll look at those. So on that last one, um, these are, as you can see, long sections, and today we started going through section I. Um, you start going through, and everything starts looking the same. Words look, uh, pretty normal, but if you can take the time to read through, if you see anything that doesn't make sense language-wise, or, um, uh, some word that is actually misspelled, but because it's misspelled with a word that is acceptable, but it doesn't really belong there, if you see anything of that nature, just, uh, please let us know, and we'll make those changes before we finalize and vote on that. And one last, uh, note on the dates. When we first started, remember this exercise, we said we're gonna go back, because some of these dates are, you know, from early two thousands and stuff. Uh, in some instances, we are seeing that, uh, say, if the policy's from two thousand and four, the change was made based on some, uh, some legal change, or statutory, statutory, statutory change, or regulatory change, and, uh, there is no more change after that, so it remains the same. And in some cases, we actually find that we were ahead of the game, and we made those changes prior to some other districts, uh, that followed suit. Uh, so we may still stick with the two thousand and four versions in some of those instances.
Yeah, it was a little, uh, that confused me a little, because to me, when I look at that, I see that as being, um, the last time that the policy was reviewed.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, that is not necess, that's not the case.
No.
You're reviewing it in two thousand and fifteen.
Exactly, unless there's a change.
So those dates are all out, we, once you approve section A, well, I'm gonna put the date that the section was approved, so.
Very good, alright.
Yeah. So, when, when we make the wholesale review of, uh, these policies, and then we approve it, obviously, the dates will reflect that. But I think in these cases, there was really no wholesale, so, folks were going in, uh, piecemeal, trying to update depending on the need or, uh, requirement, and the dates that you see, those are the dates they updated. They made modifications to the policies. Not necessarily the last time they talked about it, the last time they reviewed those, but the last time they made modifications to those policies, yeah. And I know in some cases it's misleading, because you don't know when was the last time actually somebody went in and checked these things.
Right, right.
So let it be known that in two thousand and fifteen, there was a review of these, uh.
That's what I wanna know.
Yes.
The, just a question, 'cause I looked through this at home. The wellness policy was part of this.
Yep.
Do, and I thought, I'm looking at this, I'm concerned, because I know there can cutbacks in the whole wellness in the district, so, so how is this wellness of the nutrition and physical, and, and there's a supposed to be a wellness committee? How is that all happening?
There is a wellness committee within the district.
Of all these people, okay.
Mm-hmm, um.
But who's doing the curriculum for the wellness? Is it the classroom teacher, or is it the PE teacher?
Well, this is, this is part of what we need to tackle starting tomorrow, you know. What parts of physical education can pick up what parts as they should? Talking about physical education as healthy lifestyle, and how can that be integrated into physical education, so that we're not, you know, just kicking a soccer ball, but we're increasing cardio rates or whatever else? Um, you know, how can we do that in some ways that, um, you know, do those two things simultaneously?
Right, and I know there's budget concern, but I don't, I, there's, there's just no way this could be done with the kids when they, the kids are having PE for thirty minutes once a week. How are they, they can, it's physically impossible for that to be delivered. So, I mean, it's just something we need to think about as a group.
Right.
'Cause maybe we're asking the impossible, when they're only meeting a short time, and if they don't meet, then they don't get anything for, you know, so.
So are you saying amending either, or increase it, or amend the policy?
I don't think we need to amend it. If it's there, we gotta work with it, but reaches a point on the line that how can, long can we keep thinking that we'd be cutting, when?
Exactly.
It's impossible to give these kids wellness, when, you know, I'm a teacher, I have them one, I have them for thirty minutes once a week. How do you do that, you know?
Well, you, you make an excellent point, though. If it's impossible to do, then why is it in the policy?
Well, because we have to believe that wellness is very important, or, or somebody else has to do it, and I think that's what they're saying.
This is a regulatory requirement.
Right.
Just, uh, just saying, you have to, this policy's a regulatory requirement.
So what happens if you're not complying with the regulatory requirements?
Well, then, I think what Judy's saying, then it's gonna fall upon the classroom teacher to have to deliver this.
Or we've gotta figure out where.
Uh, who's gonna do it.
Who's gonna do what, when, and how? Do, are there places where the school nurses could be, or the school nurse leader could be doing some work in classrooms? You know, how does this all work itself out? So those are questions yet to be answered.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like a lot of pressure.
And there were, there are two components.
Put on people.
There are two components to this policy.
Good luck with that one.
I'm sorry.
Put it on the list, right, Judy?
Absolutely.
It's on the list.
For July first. 'Cause the list till June thirtieth is full. There is no more room on that.
Your superintendent will have plenty to do, so.
I don't wanna do everything, 'cause, you know, I give the person nothing to do, you know.
Exactly.
But I'm saying, some of those things just become impossible, because of budget cutbacks, and we're, we're taking away the issues of things that are very important. This is just as important as reading and, and learning how to do math. This is just as important.
Right, well, it's interesting, last week, um, Mary Burks went on Tuesday, and then Pat Lynch, John Cavolo, Jen Champagne and I went on Wednesday to the state's annual curriculum fall convening, as they call it, you know. Um, and for the first time, and I think it's because there are two former superintendents in the upper management at the DESI, for the first time, I saw actual helpful things from the department for school districts to use. Templates for things, uh, you know, educator evaluation, they've come up with a system of videos that I can use with the senior leadership team. Let's watch this video, let's see what we all think. Are we calibrating our observations of teachers so that you're not observing and giving feedback in one way, and you're doing something totally different? Are we understanding the same things about good practice and how to give helpful feedback to teachers? I never saw that before from the department, so there was quite a bit of that. Um, there was a whole thing that, uh, they put together about inclusion in the regular classroom, uh, and some guidance that they've put out that was actually helpful guidance. So, there is a move afloat at the state department to try and be more helpful, so I think that, because this is what the problem has been, is we are on mandate overload. Every time I turn around, the commissioner's got something else, you know, um, that he thinks he'd like for us to do, and he can't understand why we can't do it. It's 'cause we couldn't finish the twelve other things we got last week to do, you know, thirteen this week, so.
But I think that, you know, there's something to what Jim said as well, that we don't look at education holistically anymore. There are, we prioritize certain items, and one budget time comes, if there will be any cuts, we went in the direction of, uh, phys ed, or art, or music, or whatever it was. So this is partially, at least partially related to that, that now we don't have the resources to be able to provide something, uh, that is, that is a requirement of us. Uh, there's somewhere here, I don't know where it is, but something like sixty minutes per day activity per student type of thing. There is no way we're, you know, we're getting close to that, or we're able to do that. But are there any alternatives that we can offer to the students without really, you know, killing our budget, or, uh, the resources? That might be something that we'll look into. The, the first part of the policy was put together by the health advisory, uh, committee, and.
Basically, it came from a template that we were all given at the time these regs came out.
Yeah, so, cool.
Well, right now, it's just words on paper.
Yeah.
And that's what it seems like, that's all that matters.
But again, I think it's a case of, this is where the strategic thinker in me comes out, you know, um, even just putting out the memo about tomorrow's professional development thing, um, and clarifying for people today that you have passed a strategic plan in which there is a goal around programs, and here's what the goal has to say, and this is how Tuesday ties into helping us move forward on that strategic plan. I think, you know, in terms of your role as a school committee working together with me and who comes after me, it's kind of putting on that thirty thousand view that says, "Hi, we have these policies. How does our budget address this? How does our budget address, um, you know, the curriculum goal, the, uh, technology goal, the, you know, whatever? We've gotta start looking at, how do we make the budget document speak to your strategic plan?" And one of the things I'll say to teachers tomorrow is, the questions I'm asking you to answer is that, you have a standard that's a high priority, and you don't have the materials to teach it, now's the time to tell us, because we're getting ready to do a new budget, and the budget needs to resource what we need to do. So, they, you know, in, in that respect, you know, "Hi, I can't teach this thing about reading, 'cause I have, it's not in the textbook, and I don't have anything to supplement the textbook to teach this thing, but we decided it's important enough that it needs special emphasis." Okay, well, what is the material you use to teach? You know, what is out there that's a resource? And let's take a look at that, and does that make sense, and do we put that into the budget? You know, those kinds of, of decisions. So it's just a different way of thinking about how to do this work.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And speaking of that strategic plan, we've talked about, did, did we get that, or to the town leaders, so they have a copy of it? Like, we should've given it tonight.
I know, I should've given it to them tonight. My goal was to get out a memorandum today, to get it done, but it just didn't happen, so it will by Monday.
That would help, especially if we get it to selectmen, town administrator, and probably even members of the finance committee.
Yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't hurt, if they don't look at it, that's fine, but if we refer to it down the line.
Right.
Actually, it's imperative, because that was part of our commitment to them.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Judy will take care of that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Get that off your list, right?
Yep.
I'll watch it.
Only to be replaced by something else, so it's okay.
They always are.
I think it's a hundred and ninety-three items.
Oh, so. Now I have a hundred and ninety-four.
Excuse me, I'm right, but it's not.
No, that's, that's, that was a good question. I would, I would suggest that we first try electronic distribution, as opposed to printing and sending to everyone.
Yeah, I'll send it to, uh, Mark Baucus and to John Robert.
The fiscal person in Emory. Let's do it electronically and.
Yeah.
Well, you're on record in minutes for saying it's environmentally sound, too, so.
I'm giving you a compliment.
Oh, thank you.
Ever the fiscal person that you are.
So, thank you for that. Next up, so when are we gonna revisit, by the way, before we move on, just, uh, when are we gonna do our second meeting?
Would be at the next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay.
Comfortable.
All right, that sounds good. Uh, old business after-school program, and you have a memorandum of understanding for us?
Right, this was a sample. You had asked, uh, Chris Taggart if, um, he had something that, uh, he could share, and so he, um, put this together. I think it was modeled after, you know, another, um, district, um, that was done. So just, 'cause you had asked to see what one would look like as you, uh, go down this road of which way you wanna go with after-school programming.
Yeah. So, do you expect comments on this, or?
Yeah.
Or is it just supposed to be a sample?
This was, he just sent, he, 'cause you would ask to see a sample MOA, he's, or MOU, they're all the same thing. So he sent this along.
Okay, so a couple of comments then. Um, in section two, if we're gonna go with, uh, those dates, I thought that it would be, at the end of it, at the end of the paragraph, we're talking about June fifteenth. Probably end of month would be better, since later on, we're saying that the program will end, uh, at the end of the school year, then we will be in a position to at least decide whether or not we wanna continue based on whatever the entire year's performance was. I don't know why we would.
June fifteenth, within the last day of school with no snow days.
Yeah.
Is June fourteenth.
June fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So you would have a school committee meeting on the sixth, you'd also have one on the twentieth.
Right.
So if you wanted to make the date the twentieth, then you would decide.
Okay, so at the very least, it should be the twentieth, not, not the fifteenth, I thought. Uh, the, the other thing, under section three, uh, there are a couple of items that are listed in that section that relate to West Street Elementary and East Meadow. Uh, they start with CES. Those are not things that folks on our side would do. Those are CES, uh.
Right, so in other words, West Street and East Meadow would allow CES the use of the buildings, that they would meet with the CES after-school director every now and then, um, that West Street would collect the registration fees and then hand them off. The schools, I mean.
Right, I would, I'm only referring to the two bullets that start with CES. The one says, "CES with support from the schools will establish."
Right.
Which means the action belongs to CES, so it doesn't have to be under the, um, roles and duties of our two schools. Same thing for the next one. In fact, for whatever reason, the same bullets are repeated under this, uh, the next section anyway. Um, the third and fourth one that begin with CES, it's the same thing, as far as I can see.
But it's roles and expectations of partners, and in MOU, you, you line out what each side does.
Yeah.
Right, and, and the first side belongs to the roles and, uh, duties of our two schools, and.
Right, so in other words, in.
It doesn't, it's not needed.
In that top part, it would then say, what it says to me is that, I see what you're saying. What it says to me is that support from the schools, so the schools in their role would have to furnish CES with, like, the RIMS, PBEIS stuff that we're doing, so that they can speak the same language. Then on their side, they would implement those. Then on their side, they would implement those spaces.
So the action would belong to them, on the first part, the action would belong to us.
Right.
Okay, that's...
And then obviously, you know, they would follow our emergency protocols.
Yep.
Yeah, so in other words, we would give them what the protocols are on our side, they would implement them on their side, so.
Yep. The other thing here is related to a mention of, which I cannot find now, emergency plan. I don't know where it is here, but it's in my notes. Oh, it says CES with support from the schools will implement emergency plan. So this would not be covered under our overall emergency plan that you're working on?
Well, they are technically running the program. So in other words, we would need to say to them, here are our protocols that you need to implement.
Because it's our, our building, I thought our emergency plan would have led to that.
So, I mean, our emergency plan involves response from emergency responders, the town or whomever in whatever the occasion is, transportation, et cetera. So we set what those parameters are, they're not going to set something different, they can be used what we want.
That's what I wanted to clarify. And CES will manage after-school staff, or there is a, this is a nitpicky, but there is something that says CES will manage after-school staff's payroll and they forgot an apostrophe there.
That is nitpicking, am I?
Yeah, well, it's a contract, you know, I...
It's a sample contract.
And finally, the question is, do half-day and vacation programs interfere with other contracts that we have, which is a question that came up a few times in previous conversations?
I'm not sure, knowing all of the moving parts. And I guess that's a question, do you want a half-day release program and do you want a school vacation program? I mean, those are things that you could decide to do or not to do. Again, this is a template based on the work that they've done with other districts.
I thought it was intriguing, but I was also thinking based on, I may be wrong on this one, but say, children's first, that they are doing similar stuff, if they are, then do we still have to be concerned about any conflict with the contract that we have with them?
All you have with them is a contract to rent space. You do not have a contract to provide programming, so...
With who, what, what...
Children first.
Oh, yeah, right.
The only contract is for the space rental.
It feels like, I don't know, am I the only one thinking this, but it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse here. We're talking, we're spending a fair amount of time discussing this and I don't know if I've missed something or what, but weren't we waiting for more information from them to compare costs or, I mean, are we at the point where we're, we're voting on this or...
No, we're voting on it.
No, I know, but it...
Well, I think, again...
We're heading in this direction because I, I feel like I'm missing, like I missed a piece.
Well, no, you, you had asked after his presentation if he could share what a sample MOU would look like, so he shared this with me, so I'm sharing it with you.
Okay.
Because sharing is caring.
This looks rather detailed to me, of course, I, I come from a holding perspective here. I have particular allegiance to the program that I helped start with Pam McCully, so forgive me, but I have to put it out there because I was sort of married to it and sort of put it in and, and I know you might have questions about it and I understand if it's 25 versus $30 an hour, but it seems to me this is a lot of stuff to throw back in to what is presently going on in the schools that I think could impact, it probably would be more expensive, and I know they don't have a coordinator, but if the principals did hire a coordinator to, and I'm sure there's someone looking for some money out there and try to make this work where it has worked, especially the point that, you know, there's $6,000 or something sitting in that account presently, which means it's worked all these years.
Right.
You know, and it's worked, it's not, and it's still cost-effective, even if you pay someone $30 an hour. And I'm sure this is a great program, keep it in reserve for maybe when we get everybody on one campus down the road, that's our plan and for two, three years.
I'm just laying out options. That was, all this was intended to do, Jim. If you decide you want an in-house program, then so be it, but your role as a school committee would be to set the rate for the director, set the rate for the people who are going to offer the stuff and set the rate for the people who play, who pay in. That's your role as a school committee, so that's why it's, it's in front of you. That's not a decision I can make, that's purely within your arena.
And it has not been changed since we first put it in place, X amount of years ago.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I think, well, fair points.
So I think that's the first decision, do you want to stay with an in-house program or do you want to do something like this?
Well, that's my, that's my personal preference, but I'm not gonna say anymore because I have a whole different perspective.
No, and if, and if your preference is to stay with what is, then that kicks in a second set of decisions, which is, how much do you pay your coordinator, how much do you pay the people who do the thing and how much do you charge parents so that it's, it's self-sustaining?
Have you gotten, because I know, and I'll be honest, because I know this, either way, it's going to have an impact and an expectation of the elementary school principals because they have a part in this. Probably more of a part if it's our own internal ASAP program, but do you have any feedback from them? Because I don't want to step on their toes and see where they stand in this whole thing and maybe here for some parents, I mean, I know Jennifer, you must have some kids who take part in it presently, but I mean, I want to also be respectful of the two principals who, who regardless have to help this and have to hire a person and whether you pay them whatever amount in that perspective.
They will do whatever you want to have done, you know, they were feeling like me, we all need some direction here from the school committee because obviously this is part of what you do as a school district, whether you contract it out or you own it, it doesn't matter, either way.
But just, but Deb, but Deb has, Deb has been part of this for, I mean, it was part of it when she was a teacher there and she's now been her principal for what, three years, experiencing it. Jen knows about it from when she was a teacher there and at least her second year as principal of it, so again, that's, they have some experience now, so...
They were very intrigued by what the collaborative had to offer. They felt that...
And I'm sure it's good, and I don't disregard that.
The emphasis on the varying activities, the more extended hours they thought would resonate with parents, the fact that they would do either homework help and/or enrichment stuff with kids. I did talk to Chris about the fact that there is the homework club at East Meadow School that they take the late bus and he said, you know, if kids still wanted to participate in that and the late bus could bring them to West Street, so if, you know, the whole thing's at West Street, say for example, you know, and we haven't, none of those decisions have been made until you decide which direction you want to go in. You know, that he wouldn't mind if kids came late from the homework study, from the study club here over there, you know. So I think Chris is willing to be as flexible about this as you would like him to be. So this was just as an example of an MOU, this was not an expectation you would vote this tonight. So again, the first decision is, do you want to run it yourselves? And if so, that kicks in one set of decisions, or do you want to outsource it, in which case that kicks in some sort of MOU in that thing happen?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, maybe I'm having such a hard time with this because I don't feel as though I'm in a position to answer the question. I don't think it really matters what I want.
I, I, going with that, first of all, I agree with you that you never might be jumping in with the MOU because we have to first make that decision that Trudy's talking about. But we had Chris make this presentation here last time. Based on what we've seen and based on the survey results that we got from folks who are interested in these programs, it seems like what we've been offering was fine for, you know, for, for the period we offered, but people may have some different interests. And the program that they're offering is allowing some folks to be able to participate in more, more educationally inclined, whether it's after-school formalized programs.
More formalized.
Uh, classrooms. Uh, the other thing is that these, this is not really an outside contractor or playing contractor that we're going to, this is a service that is offered through a collaborative to which we are paying membership dues and we are members represented through me, at least at this point in time, on their board of directors. So this is something that we hope to get from the collaborative unless we want to continue to pay membership dues without an expectation that we're going to get some great services from them. And they were flexible enough to, I guess, accommodate whatever needs we had because we still don't know whether we want to do this every day of the week, one day of the week, after school, in the evenings, vacation days, half-days, whatever, we still have to make those decisions, but they were open to, to helping us with any one of those scenarios. And at the end of the day, the, the main thing from my perspective, I completely understand that there was a lot of great effort put in place to create the program years ago and you were an instrumental part of it. But the way I'm looking at it is, what, what is, what is the best option for the kids? In this MOU, at least, there is some mention that there might be some very substantial after-school help. If there is any need for MCAS-related help, they can provide something to that effect. So there is an opportunity to actually provide the children with a fuller program that we might not be in a, a position to offer, especially now given that we are short on resources. We just heard that we are asking our resources to do a lot of things already, from substitute to doing things after-school, and this would be another thing potentially put on their shoulder. And the, the slight increase in rate may not be. And the last thing, the way I read this and the way I heard it, and correct me if I'm completely off on that, they will actually come to our school district and find folks who are interested to be part of it, so we're not really saying it's completely outsourced to the collaborative, it's going to be still...
The running order is outsourced to them, yeah. Yeah, that they would be looking for our staff and or community people to still offer things like they have in the past, it would just be a little more of a time commitment and, you know, probably at a higher rate of pay. But again, you know, if that's not a direction you want to go, that's also fine. I just, we just, I was presented with this, hi, I'm leaving, and I was like, oh, I didn't even know, yeah, and I didn't know I owned the program. So that just raised the question for me was, how did this all get started? And there is a role for the committee to play in this in terms of, yes, are we? Because you really, for your own, for the liability of the people who work in the program, no matter which way you go, if you were even to do it in-house, for the liability of the people who would work in the program and for the kids and for the district as a whole, you need to have a decision that says, yes, we are going to offer this program, here are the rates, here's how it's going to go down. You really need to do that just from a, that's the, the legal, legal hat of me because you, if it's kind of loosey-goosey, you could potentially leave yourself open to some vulnerabilities. So that's really my whole intent and purpose of bringing this to you was to say, let's just make sure, whatever. In the meantime, you know, I had talked to other superintendents, what do you do about after-school stuff? People said to me, oh, collaborative runs a program, da-da-da-da-da, you know, how's it working for you? Greenfield loves it, East Hampton loves it, I talked to both those superintendents, very pleased with what they've gotten for their kids and the help that they've gotten and they believe it does have a positive impact on MCAS results as well, so they seem to be very happy with it. So that's why I'm just laying them out, whatever you decide, I will do.
In the collaborative's annual report, their after-school program, as, as one of their board members representing Granby, you know, we see the directors' report, the annual reports and all that, their after-school program was recognized by several school districts as, as top-notch. I don't remember what the term that they use or the award is, but they actually are, are considered a very high-quality after-school program, they're recognized for that. So we are, what we are hopefully trying to do is primarily to provide that type of service to the students here. It's not to dismiss the great work that our internal resources have been trying to do for so many years, but at the end of the day, even with this, they will be administering the program, but they will come in and find those stu, those teachers who are interested
Teachers, parents, whoever.
In doing the program. So we will have our internal resources involved in it.
Do we need to have a conversation with children's first? Because, I don't know, I have this, just this nagging thought that somehow this could potentially, if we formalize the program, which, you know, I, I think is, my gut is telling me that, you know, this could work out pretty, this could work out well. But we also have children's first that many people use and I, I see it as somewhat of an overlapping, you know, and I know that it's been thrown out there before, that it could potentially cause an issue.
The one thing I will say as a parent, as a parent who used children's first, which, and, and they were good for, for what I use them for, and I have to stay out of the after-school discussion, however, children's first was something entirely different, it was daycare.
It's daycare. Yeah, I know, my, my kids were in it.
And it was massively expensive.
Yeah, my kids have, have done it too. I, I'm just saying as a courtesy.
Oh, yeah.
As a courtesy, it seems like...
They would also go longer than this program would, so it could very well be that if a parent really needed to have their child cared for until 6 o'clock at night, that when, that was another reason why we thought about using West Street School, that if a parent needed to pick up children first for... An hour or two. You know, an hour or two, that that could potentially happen as well, you know. Or their primary audience is the little guys, you know, so whether we focus this kind of program on the older kids, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ways to think about this, so certainly this is not a decision you're going to run into, but I think the first decision is, are we going to do it ourselves or are we going to outsource the management of it, I should say?
When do we need to make that decision?
You can make it whenever you want.
So...
Your decision.
If you want it to start in January, you need to give time for that program.
Right.
Well, yeah, we got that last meeting.
They said one month, which means by our next meeting, we have to make that decision. So with that, let me ask this question. Deanna, I heard you say that you are not really ready or in a position to make that decision. What else?
No, you misheard.
Okay.
I'm on the fence, I'm literally on the fence and I could go either way.
Okay.
So I don't feel as though I should be making this decision for, I, I get it that this falls, you know, within our purview, but I feel like if, if I make the decision one way, we could really be, you know, angering a lot of people and if we do it another way, we could be angering...
Who would we be angering?
Maybe anger isn't the right word, but...
Another way to do this is now that we have a dollar amount, because we asked on the survey, a sort of nebulous, would you be willing to pay more question without knowing what that dollar amount was? And, let's see, you know, 18 people said, yeah, I'd pay more, one person said, no, I would not at East Meadow, 16 people at West Street said, yeah, I'd pay more, one said I wouldn't. 12 people, 14 people altogether on the survey said I wasn't, they weren't sure if they would pay more and two people said it would depend on the cost. So whether or not we go back out and say, the school committee is still wrestling with this decision, we, you know, thank all the people who gave us feedback on the first survey, we now know what the numbers are.
How many days a week would you be willing?
Right.
At this rate?
Yeah.
Three days a week, five days a week, one day a week?
Right.
Would you be interested in half-day coverage?
Yeah. Those kinds of things, so you could get a little more information before you act. I don't know if that would help make the decision or if that would just make things worse, I don't know.
Yeah.
So Deanna, your concern, is it, is it because we don't really know what people may or may not like from price to content or is it...
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to set the program up for success.
Right.
Right?
Or is it also related to what Jim was mentioning earlier, that we have a program that we had set up ourselves, do we need to go out? Is, is part of your concern related to that as well?
Yeah, I mean, part of it is that, you know, this, this program that Jim set up, it was successful in the past, and the reason why we're even looking at this is because the coordinator left. So, you know, do we just hire another coordinator? Do we raise the rate of the coordinator and, and, you know, formalize that position more and, and, you know, continue on our merry way? I mean...
Well, to me, that, to me, that's the safe thing to do at this point. You're, you're going to a whole new program in the middle of the year, getting to the wintertime. You go into a whole new program in the middle of the year, getting to the wintertime, you still got to set this up. I think it'd be easier to just find principals to hire a coordinator. And if they need to be paid thirty dollars an hour, make that change. If the teachers who do it or whoever does it is paying thirty dollars an hour. And it seems to me, still keeping the rate of four dollars an hour, if I'm doing a four-hour activity or five-week activity, if an hour after school, paying twenty dollars, we're still gonna make some money. There's enough of money in here to still make some money within our own buildings. So, there's a program that would occur at East Meadow. There's a program that occurs at West Street. Whoever can get to do the program. And it is what it is, you know. If you only get one activity, then that's what it is. And then, and I'm sure this collaborative is good, and I'm sure it's worked well in the other schools, because they had no other after-school program. So, of course, this is the after-school program. But we have had one here that seems to have worked, you know, especially in the last four years. But then we don't have a coordinator. It makes it hard, because the principals have enough to do. They can't go looking for that too. But if they hire a coordinator whose job is to get people to do some of these activities, right, wrong, and different.
You should talk to the other schools, though, if you have that question, because I can tell you that most of those other schools do have other things going on at the same time. So, it's not, they did have programs. I mean, even Southampton had, had the YMCA. They had, they had other programs. So, that's not necessarily true either.
Well, I mean, I don't, again, I don't really care. As long as there's some kind of activities for the kids, but I just say that at this point-
The one difference that I would say, the one difference that I would say, and as a parent, what was hard for me, as a working parent, is a one, a one-hour, one-day-a-week program didn't work for me. Except for the time that I actually went and decided to be a teacher for one, because I wanted Gregory in one. So, I mean, there's different sets of parents. So, the parents who are able to either have their kids take the light bus or can go pick up their kids. And then there's the ones who never put their kids in that program because it was only one hour for five weeks and they had to set up something else.
And then you run into the problem of your kids only wanna do one or two of the activities being offered, and then you can't get in because they fill up so quickly. Saying, "Oh, we can't do that one. How about this one?" And they don't wanna do it. You know, it's from a, from a working perspective and kids who need some social skills and some help, you know, a robust program like this a couple of days a week is, it's, we're really comparing apples and oranges. And I think the ASAP program is really, really great if you can get your child in to the one that they want. And if your child isn't on the spectrum, they can't, they won't take them. I had to stop my son from going. This program will allow all of the children access, which is lovely. But, yeah, it's more expensive. And are we gonna lose people because of the cost? So, yeah, it's, it's really different programs.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And in terms of the program that, and I can find it in our drive, so I can't, restate what would be offered through the collaborative, but they were not the same thing. I mean, there, there is, there is a pretty substantial difference between the programs that they're offering.
There's the homework help section, and for the little, little ones, it's more just literacy kinds of things, because kindergartners tend not to have homework. There's, you know, a snack break, a recess break, and then there are enrichment activities. And it can be anything from theater arts to STEM stuff to whatever, you know. Depending on the interest of the kids and the interest and who you can get for instructors. And they've had enough experience, I think, in other districts to know what other districts have found to be very popular and successful offerings.
Did you send the presentation from the collaborative separately in an email?
The presentation from-
Wasn't there something that he presented here?
He just came and spoke with you.
You just talked to him?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know where I'm remembering those different-
I think he went on the collaborative's website just to see what it was that they had offered.
Here's what I'm gonna say.
Okay.
I will, I mean, if anybody is strongly in favor of one or the other, I will vote the consensus. Because I trust, you know, you have kids that are this age. I am so far out of that loop. You know, I have no idea. So, I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that I have, you know, this in-depth knowledge on what we think, you know, what I think we should do. So, I'm willing, you know, and I know Marie has much more in-depth knowledge about the collaborative, as do you. So, I'm willing to, to vote the consensus.
The difference is Marie cannot vote on that.
Right.
Yeah. So, again, I mean, there's still four members that can vote. Because honestly, I could literally go either way.
So, would it help, would it help to wait until our next meeting, which I believe is the last meeting we should be making this decision, if we wanna go with a program next semester? If we think that whatever we have right now is gonna be whatever we have then, and we're ready to go up or down right now, let's just see if we have a motion, then we can, we can vote for it. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to proceed with the after-school program presented by the collaborative?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there, thank you both. Is there any more discussion, comment?
The only other thing that I wanna reiterate is that if we do decide to go with the collaborative, I do think it's important to have a conversation with Children's First as courtesy. And not have them hear it from somebody off the school committee.
So, before we vote for this then, would, would we say that we should have a conversation before we vote and say, "This is what it is"? Or is it sufficient for us to show that courtesy and say, "This is a decision that we made as a school committee, and we're sharing it with you before you hear it from elsewhere"? Is that what you have in mind? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm not so sure that what they say is going to influence our decision.
I don't think it should, but, yeah.
I do think, though, that, you know, if we do vote in favor, one of the first phone calls should be to-
Okay, I hear you.
It's a good business decision. It's a good community decision.
Absolutely, because they've been involved with our district for many, many years, and it's the right thing to do.
Yep. And this is not a forever contract anyway. I mean, we just do it one year, we see, or one semester even. We see that it's not what we wanted. We can go back to, right now, we don't have a program. I mean, we have to really find a way to recreate it, regenerate it, re-energize it. So, uh-
That would give us a comparison.
Right. So, whether this becomes a stopgap or a long-term solution, we'll find out then. You know, this is basically our trial. We can look at it that way, too. So, with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor to approve the after-school program through the collaborative. Please say aye.
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 I abstain.
You abstain? Jim?
I'll do against.
Okay, so we have three, four, yep. Thank you. And I completely understand. I mean, this is something that you-
As long as it's not for the kids, it's fine, but I just have to, again, that's just where I'm coming from, so.
Yeah. Completely understood. So, let's see how this works.
Okay. Are you looking for the, from one of you, for Children's First, and want me to make that?
Well, I know it's not gonna be me.
You're the one who said that it should be done.
I'm not the chair and I'm not the superintendent.
Well, you, I heard the word "school committee" in there.
Who's in charge? Is it still Donna?
Yeah, Donna did it.
You know, if you have any problem, I have no problem calling her.
Okay.
Let me do that, I'll do that.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And I'm not gonna be very specific. I'm just letting you know, just, you know, let's say we're switching to something to try something. It could impact your program. We don't know that yet, but just so you're aware of it.
Right.
Go with the flow.
Yeah, and if she has any other questions, you know, if you wanna send her my way, that's fine.
Where do I get in touch with her, do you know? Is she at the, on Pleasant Street?
I do think it's important, Jim, that you convey the message that, you know, we are sensitive to-
I will do that.
Then, you know, and, and meeting their needs and not wanting to have them lose any-
Right, we're trying to look at the big picture, you know, and looking at the big picture, sometimes little portions of a photograph gets messed up, you know. So, hopefully not. Hopefully, it won't impact, but.
And, you know, given that our previous after-school program did not really have any impact on them, it may just be-
Well, it did have an impact, because there were people who we'd have to let them know, because sometimes they'd be calling the school looking for Johnny. And we'd say, "Oh, no, Johnny's in a class."
Right.
Obviously, a parent can tell you, Johnny will be there later.
Yeah.
So, you know, impacted it, but it was a split kind of thing.
But again, if the collaborative knows that they need to let Children's First, or they need to have that conversation, so we close that communication gap, I think that's certainly something-
And if you decide that the activity's gonna be held down there, then they're gonna be in the same physical place where they should be anyway, so.
That would probably need to be something that we emphasize with the collaborative.
Yeah.
You know, this relationship with Children's First and the communication.
Yeah. Agreed. So, I will just talk with Chris about changing the, extending the terms of the agreement to the later than June 20th, and that the MOU would take effect from January 2nd of 2016, or would take effect, because obviously, they've gotta get up and running, so, take effect.
I don't know. For some reason, he has some Tuesday. I don't even know if it's-
It's from another contract.
Another contract, okay.
Probably when we come back from winter break, right? Is that January? Well, the agreement, which is who does what, would actually take place now. So, I guess it would be effective today.
Yeah, we only pay for whatever service they provide, so.
Right. Eleven oh two, and then, yeah, okay. Now, I'll make that grammatical correction to staff's payroll.
Thank you. That's, that's important.
The most important change of all.
It is a contract, yeah.
Okay. So, I'll get that on the year ready to go.
I did, before we go to new business, I had a question. I just wanted to follow up on McDuffie.
I have not had a chance to really speak to Steve directly yet.
Is that on your 193?
Yes, it is. It's on the list of 193 things to do, so. But I do know that John, I think, is planning a visit over there on Friday, John Cabal, to do some- touching this, yeah, so.
Honestly, you know, putting our bashfulness on the side, I think the fact of the matter is that we have a school in our town that may have some programs or some opportunities that we may not have here and vice versa. It makes all the sense for all of us to collaborate and look for all these opportunities. So, if we can do it, that would be awesome. I'm very happy to hear that John's gonna be paying a visit there and see what comes out of it. Also, probably they hear their name and, uh, different conversations too, that, you know, enrollment's going down. How many of them went to McDuffie's? Right? So, it would be a good conversation to have, even just for that, that, you know, how can, yeah, understanding, just same town, some students select to go there. What, what can we do to maybe have some of those, uh, programs, activities to, uh, uh, to be done collaboratively so that our students here can take advantage of those too? And if we have anything here that they will, they're interested in, I'm sure we're gonna make some offer to them as well. So, how can we collaborate? That's the essence of it. So, upcoming business, there is nothing?
Uh, nothing. We've got a lot of irons in the fire, so I think we're gonna move forward with the current irons and not add any new ones for the moment.
So, for the standing reports, the first one is the collaborative again. This is off-cycle. But a quick piece of information for everyone, their financial director moved on to another position, somewhere where he has some passions related to healthcare, international healthcare, I guess. So, he moved on to a new position, and now the collaborative is in a place where they have to make a decision who's gonna succeed. Uh, who's gonna, uh-
They've made that decision.
Yeah, who's gonna be replacing him. So, that's gonna be made whenever we get together, I guess, next time, or, uh-
They've already made the decision.
Already made the decision? All right. I thought it was supposed to be voted on by the board.
We got notified who it is.
You must have voted already.
Must have.
In abstentions.
Yes.
We got notified.
All right.
Uh-oh.
That's good. All right.
It's internal, it's good.
Yeah, it is internal, it's good, but I thought there was a process to it. Anyway. West Street Building Committee. Would you like to speak to that?
I missed the last meeting, so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I was not there.
Yep, we are, um, working closer to getting ready for a, um, submission to the MSBA in December. The group is meeting again because there are some issues with some of the figures that we've gotten from the cost estimators and what MSBA allows, and they're still trying to sort through that. So, that meeting is-
The 10th?
I believe the 10th.
Yep. Yeah, the 10th and then the 19th.
Six thirty, and then the regular meeting on the 19th will also be there, so.
Is it a submission on the design or?
This is the full-blown schematic. So, this would be the vote from the MSBA that would set the reimbursement rate and give us the green light to go ahead with special time meeting and a debt exclusion vote.
Basically, we're saying we're going with this design. And then things will change around it. We'll be tweaked. The numbers may change, but that's gonna be-
What with my one?
Yeah, what we're going with. And what they are doing currently is they have to go out and ask for estimates for what we're looking at. And the numbers that they were receiving have to come close to each other, and they have to, not necessarily reconcile, but come, come up with at least one figure as a result of those numbers that they are getting from those two different reviewers. And they're not there yet. And as Judy said, seems like there is some gap in their numbers, and that's why we called for another meeting. We were supposed to meet on the 19th. We called for another meeting on the 10th to see if we can get some additional update on that one.
Right, because we wanna make sure that we can stay on track-
Yep.
For that January meeting, which means a December 1st submittal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just outreach that Jim Morrissey and myself tomorrow night will be talking to Alliance Club, spreading the word, and then-
And I won't be able to be there Thursday. I had forgotten I was going to the MAS/MASC conference, and I'm just gonna go down for a day.
And then I'll be meeting with the, whoever for the senior system lunch on this Thursday at 11:30 at the Senior Center to-
Cool, thank you for doing it.
Spread the word a bit, so hopefully, no one can say they don't know anything.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
People still say that, though.
Not anymore, hopefully.
Yeah, and there'll be, there'll be more of that as we get closer and closer. Thank you for doing that, Jim. Marie, Policy Subcommittee?
Tonight, we started looking through Section I, and we're, we've got about halfway through and still trying to reconcile what we have with what other districts have and try to make it pretty similar. So, we're still working on that and bring that to you sometime soon.
This is actually an interesting exercise, because we're realizing that school districts are looking at some other school districts. They copy-paste and they don't really look at certain things.
What it says.
Right. So, what Judy brought to our attention was that there were some items, as she explained earlier, if it's dash E, it's supposed to have been, supposed to have an exhibit, for instance. And we were not seeing that there was an exhibit. There was a policy there, so, which led us to believe that people kept on copying from each other without paying attention.
So, what the coding is, so.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I think that hyphen R is a regulation, which is basically a procedure, and anything that hyphen E is an exhibit, like an example of something you would give to somebody or do.
So, it's a, it's a fun exercise.
It's interesting.
It is interesting. And we're halfway through I, which I thought was gonna be much, was gonna take much longer, but we're good. Superintendent Search Committee?
So, if you wanna-
Doesn't matter.
Um, well, we're starting our initial interviews on the 9th. And we have three separate days to do the interviews. And then at that point, yeah, we finalize all of our questions, and each interview is about 75 minutes long. That's how much we allotted.
Oh, that's cool, huh?
And then at that point, we'll go into deliberation and see who we bring forth to the school committee.
Cool, that's great. Cool, that's great. That's great, and you guys had said that the initial meeting was a fun meeting, and the committee was working well together, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to-
They're still together, so that's a good sign.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Pretty smoothly through, um, three meetings, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep up the good work.
That's good, thank you guys for doing that, that's awesome.
It's a great group.
Yep, good.
So, um, the last item, uh, in the regular section is a list of correspondence that is in our, uh, drive, uh, and, uh, I think one of them were received by email, but probably it's by now, or was it the executive sessions stuff that were received by email, okay. Which is a good segue to our final segment, which is our executive session. Uh, we're gonna, uh, vote to enter into an executive session pursuant to MGL-C30A-S21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Grand B Education Association, Unit A, and to discuss litigation as such discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Uh, the committee will be returning to-
Will not be returning, I'm sorry, I did not appropriate that before my secretary did.
Okay, I thought maybe that was a vote or something, okay. So, correction, the committee will not be returning to regular session, so can we have a roll call to enter?
Deanna Payne-Rokowski, aye.
Jennifer Kern, aye.
Maria McCourt, aye.
Jim Petras, aye.
Anne Rayver, aye.